Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our first board of supervisors meeting for January, for 2016, January 5th, 2016. I just got a question. How come you guys are all sitting in the back row? I mean, there's a whole front row that's empty. That's the new, that's the new front row.
We'd like to leave the front for citizens.
Okay, okay. So, could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right, so we're going to start off this morning with some recognition and acknowledgements. And first, gotta put my glasses on. We're going to recognize Dennis Seibel, right? Seibel? Okay. Is he here? No.
Camera shy.
Camera shy. Okay. So I guess I'll just read it. All right. So are you going to accept it for him?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is a proclamation recognizing and honoring Dennis Seibel, Road Maintenance Supervisor, for 33 years of distinguished public service in Public Works Department. Thirty-three years. That means I was like three when he started. So whereas Dennis Seibel has served the public for 33 years in positions of increasing knowledge and diversity since January 1983, and whereas Dennis brought talent, experienced hard work and positive attitude to fulfill the responsibilities of his various duties and assignments, whereas the county and our citizens have benefited from Dennis' abilities, adaptability, and knowledge of the local roads, and whereas Dennis will be missed by the road crews who found him a devoted leader, friend, and coworker, and whereas Dennis is well-regarded in the community, having earned the trust and confidence of Calaveras County citizens, therefore, now therefore be proclaimed at the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, on this fifth day of January 2016 honors and thanks Dennis Seibel for his 33 years of contributions to the public. And can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? I have a motion by Supervisor Oliver and a second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments? Public comments on Dennis?
I didn't read the last part.
I will.
I worked as hard as I could to get Dennis to show up today, and he steadfastly refused.
He's gone.
No, he's not.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He still has a few more days left, and it actually is official in February because he has a lot of vacation stored. But in my short time here, I've learned a lot from Dennis. I counted on him during the first days of the fire. He was leading the crews that were taking FEMA and CALOES around to the various sites, and he has history and knowledge, I think, of every inch of pavement that we've got and all of the operations that we do to keep our roads and bridges operational. Dennis is heading off to the greener pastures of Nebraska where he thinks the fish are hungrier and the weather better. So I wish him well and thank him so much for the service to the department.
Great.
Thank you.
Hungrier and better weather in Nebraska.
That's what he's claiming.
Bigger mosquitoes, too. So be it further proclaimed that the board wishes Dennis a long and happy road in the years ahead, and may the fishing and hunting be good. May the fish bite and may your family prosper. Thank you, Dennis, for your service to Calaveras County.
Thank you, Dennis.
So is Jack here?
He's not camera shy.
Okay. So we have another proclamation recognizing honoring Jack Throeburger, Road Maintenance Worker Three, for 35 years of distinguished public service in the Public Works Department. You're not going to have anybody left that knows all these roads. So whereas Jack Throeburger has served the public for 35 years in positions of increasing knowledge and diversity since September 1980, and whereas Jack brought talent, experienced hard work and positive attitude to fulfill the responsibilities of his various duties and assignments, and whereas the county has benefited from Jack's knowledge of the local roads and people who travel them, and whereas Jack will be missed by the road crews who found him a devoted friend and coworker, and whereas Jack is well-regarded in the community, having earned the trust and confidence of Calaveras County citizens, now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, this fifth day of January 2016 honors and thanks Jack Throeburger for his 35 years of contributions to the public. Can I have a motion, please, for that?
So moved.
Second? Okay, do I have any public comments? Jack?
I think there's something about being a road maintenance worker at the county that says I don't want to show up at the Board of Supervisors to be recognized for my years of work and career. Jack worked up West Point Glenco for his career. I'm sure that those of you who live up there know of him and his work, never afraid to give me the honest truth about what's going on. But again, like Dennis, he's been a dedicated public servant, doing great work for a long time, and I think that the county owes him a debt of gratitude. So, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it further proclaimed that the board wishes Jack Throeburger a long and happy road in the years ahead, with just enough potholes to fill and snow to plow to keep retirement interesting. Wait a minute, he's a snow plow operator? So, thank you, Jack, for your years of service, too. Public service is not the easiest thing to do, and these folks here have endured it for quite a few years. I hope the rest of us can. All right, we have one more. And this one, I know they're here.
We'd like to make a statement if we could. We have a full, could we have a few minutes?
You start off.
Would that be okay? Thank you. Come on up, everybody. Come on up.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. I am Colleen Nunn, and I coordinate the Calaveras Youth Mentoring Program at the Calaveras County Office of Education. We are very happy to be here today to wish you a happy National Mentoring Month. And here today with me, we have Kathryn Eustace, our Director of Prevention Programs at the County Office of Education, and also three dedicated volunteer mentors, Mickey Williamson, Richard Gutierrez, and Pat Gerahan. And we are using a slogan this month for National Mentoring Month that comes from one of our mentors. At the end of each of his weekly reports, he says, "Another great day with a great kid." So we are celebrating not only the benefit that comes to our young people through the friendship with people like our mentors here today, but also the fun and satisfaction that our volunteers receive through mentoring. So if you wouldn't mind if we could give each of our mentors a minute to share why they enjoy mentoring? Yeah, thank you. Mickey, you want to talk first?
Well, I have to start out by saying that I've been a mentor for almost a year, and when I was going through the application process last year, it took me a long time to get to the point of being able to say yes. And I confess that part of that was because I was concerned about my time, you know, what will this take from my time? And what I've realized in being a mentor to a wonderful 12-year-old girl now for almost a year is that what that weekly time with her does is it adds to my time. It does not take away from it. And there have been a variety of wonderful moments, some of which are funny, like the time when she asked me if it was fun being old. And other more moving moments when I asked her at the end of last year what were some of the highlights of her year, and after she'd said a few kind of concrete things, she paused and said, "And I think the fact that I opened up to people this year." So it is, it is a very rewarding thing, and, and you know, it's, it's also for me about community because I, this morning, Colleen asked some of us if we could be here, and when I got up this morning and saw the weather, I thought, "I don't want to drive there from Murphy's. I really don't, and I want to stay home." But being part of the mentoring program is part of how I give to community, and so it wasn't about me again, it was about showing up for something that I care about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I've been a mentor, I haven't been a mentor as long as she has, but I just started this last year. I was looking forward to it. Colleen's been talking to me about it for the last two, three years. My wife's a mentor, again, returning as a mentor. And last year, I just stopped working. I just decided to quit working, and that allowed me to have the free time to meet with my mentor. I didn't want to get into a commitment where I was constantly having to cancel. And I really enjoy getting together with him, sharing ideas. He's a fifth grader at Michelson. The questions, sharing some of my travels in the world in the U.S., and just being around and coming up with ideas for projects, you know, what are we going to do with our two to three hours that we get together to share on a weekly basis? And it's, it's really been, for me, it's a real learning experience when you start talking to people, to a young person, and they ask you questions, and you start thinking about things that maybe you hadn't thought about in the last 20 or 30 or 40 years. So for myself, it's also been a real improvement in my life to be able to share my time and experiences with this young man. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't think we'd be tricked into speaking here this morning, but I'll take a moment. I've been in a mentoring program a bit over two years, going in my third year now, and I've been very fortunate to be paired up with a young man who's a fantastic scholar and athlete. It's been a pleasure to see him growing into a fine human being, and I get as much, if not more, out of the program than he does. And what I will say is I've been involved in a lot of organizations and programs, and the youth mentoring program is, in my opinion, one of the best administered and cared-for, whatever term you want to use, organized thing I've been involved in, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of the program, in no small part to these two ladies right here. Thank you.
We also brought some materials so that you can know which young people are waiting for mentors right now, if we can share that, and our Calaveras County Office of Education Annual Report, which features all three of our mentoring programs. Yeah, on the, in the center.
Yeah.
So thank you for recognizing National Mentoring Month. Cliff, do you want us to read the proclamation, or do you want to read?
I'll read it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Here.
Yeah, okay, come on.
So I think it's honored to be a board supervisor of Calaveras County, California. It's a proclamation recognizing January as National Mentoring Month, and January 21st, 2016 has Thank You Mentor Day. Celebrated that.
Thank you for taking the Thank You Mentor Day.
Well, Thank You Mentor Day.
Right. Recognize that everybody should have any kind of mentor, reminds you a moment to remember and thank them, and then pass that to the rest.
Good idea. So whereas the future of Calaveras County rests on hopes and dreams of its children and youth, and whereas too many of our youth face struggles with alcohol and other drugs, gangs, teen pregnancy, and educational failures, whereas mentors provide valuable role models for our youth, whereas relationships with caring mentors offer youth valuable support, friendship, and guidance toward making healthy life decisions, and whereas research has shown that mentors are less likely to skip school, less likely to start using drugs, and less likely to start drinking, and whereas mentoring and after-school programs, mentor coalitions, and public and private organizations throughout California are committed to increasing the number of quality mentors available, and whereas there are Calaveras youth in first through 12th grades waiting for mentors, waiting for mentors, and whereas National Mentoring Month provides an opportunity to recognize and commend the efforts of mentors and raise community awareness for, of the importance of mentoring. And now therefore, be resolved, Board Supervisors, Calaveras County, hereby declares 2016 as National Mentoring Month, and January 21st, 2016 has Thank You Mentor Day. And can I have a motion, please, by the board?
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Poncy.
Second? Second?
Second by Supervisor Currie. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments? Public comments? So my wife has become a mentor, and she went through the class in early days of it, or they don't know?
An organization building about the program, which is an hour-long meeting, which anyone can attend to learn more about mentoring without making that commitment?
Just to kind of find out what, you know, what you're getting into, which is actually probably a positive thing in your life, if you ever get a chance to actually show people they did at Mentoring Month as well. So be it first resolved that the Board of Supervisors encourages Calaveras residents to honor the role models in their lives by becoming mentors to local youth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we have public comment. Public comment is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted in the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the regular agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the consent agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So do I have public comments? It's going to be an easy day, huh?
Good morning, Mark Bolger, Mountain Ranch, also on the Board of Directors of the Calaveras Cannabis Alliance. First off, I'd like to thank the board for going into the late hours at the last meeting. I know that dragged on for quite a bit, complicated issue, a lot of ins, a lot of outs. Thank you for your time on that. I know we had discussed the matter of priority consideration at the state level and the fact that there was a January 1st deadline. I know we're all on the same page that most counties in California have not addressed this yet. I know that us not addressing it the last issue was not a deal breaker for anything at the state level. What I'd like to do is provide you with a commercial cannabis activity registration form that Humboldt County has produced. I think it's very clear, concise. I think it'd be a very good model for our county to look at. I think there are a couple issues with it that might need to be tailored to our specific county, but I think it is a good framework to look at. Beyond that, Counselor Matthew Clark, who was here last time, had suggested a resolution, or I believe that's what a county council had said, would be able to be done to acknowledge what good standing has been prior to January 1st. I don't think this form has to be enacted instantly. I think that pursuing, you know, a resolution that states people that were in compliance with Proposition 215 and following state law would be a quicker way of going about it, but I do think that this is a good form that could be used as a framework by our county. So I'd like to submit that, if that's all right. And that's all. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Years. Any other public comments?
Good morning, Board. My name is Bill McManus with the Calaveras Project. I'm here today to offer my apologies to the board that for the last 14 to 16 months, while I've attended almost every meeting that you've had, along with the Planning Commission, and given you material and data, booklets, and hundreds of pages of information, I've now come to the conclusion that I failed to properly convey the information to you. The reason I sense that now is an article that appeared in the Calaveras Enterprise on Christmas Day, in which our, the chairman of the board is quoted as saying, "I don't know what their business is. I don't know how they're doing their business," or anything like that, "so you're asking me to make a decision on something I don't really know that much about." And it kind, I guess that is the general attitude of the board. It's kind of shocking to me, so all I can say is that I failed to properly inform you. Otherwise, that probably shouldn't be the case. One other item from the last meeting, there was a claim made that the growing, industrial growing in the county has produced 4,000 jobs. Along with that, there were comments made, kind of out of order, but in any case, made that those included jobs that were legal, like pay taxes, and social security, and withholding, and all the rest. Well, it's, I'm surprised it didn't raise a flag for you to at least ask a question about it. That's a lot of jobs. I think the news would be that Calaveras County would end up with the lowest unemployment rate in the state of California, and that would be spread across the state. So what I did is, after Christmas, I did some research, and I pulled up a 25-year history of unemployment by month for Calaveras County, also pulled up a 15-year history of unemployment by industry in Calaveras County, and pulled up information about Calaveras County right now, and in going through all these numbers, and I didn't print them up to hand out, normally I'd do that, but apparently that's a wasted effort, there's no 4,000 in these, in these numbers, in these, in these forms. There's no 4,000 people here. So either the claim of 4,000 is a lie, or the claim that they pay taxes is a lie, or perhaps both of it is. But they don't show up here. 25 years has never been more than 800 people, variants, excuse me, between the highest number of employed and the lowest number of employed. There hasn't been a 4,000-person swing in the entire 25 years of this report. This is available online from the EDD office. It's called LMI, which is Labor Market Information, part of EDD. So if you're interested, you might be able to, you might want to look it up and see. Currently, the areas, the census described places, whatever, and since we don't have cities here, of the highest unemployment in Calaveras County right now seem to be the areas that should be having these 4,000 people work, which is McCollum Hill, Mountain Ranch, and West Point. So that information just doesn't seem to jive with anything that was said here, so I thought I would at least bring it up, and if you're interested, I can either give you the link, or you can check with EDD. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Just quickly, since I'm here, and it's the first of the year, seems like a good time. I know that I don't always agree with a lot of the things that come out of this board, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank you for doing what you're doing. It's not a very, probably, popular and thankful job, so I just want to make sure that occasionally you do get thanked for showing up. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year there, Bonnie.
Happy New Year.
I, too, have information to share about the subject you talked about a couple meetings ago, medical marijuana. It became apparent to me that there was a piece of the puzzle missing when you all were asking questions about primary caregivers. What I've passed out to you, of course, is the Compassionate Use Act of 1996, in which primary caregivers are referred to three times, and the final paragraph is the definition of what a primary caregiver is in reference to legalized marijuana, no, medical marijuana. The second page shows the process which a primary caregiver needs to go through in order to acquire the authority to assist a user, and it consists of, first of all, you have to have, on page three, documentation of a doctor's diagnosis of a condition that would allow the use of medical marijuana, including Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, which is AIDS, anorexia, arthritis, cachetia, I don't know what that is, cancer, chronic pain, glaucoma, migraine headaches, persistent muscle spasms, including but not limited to spasms associated with multiple sclerosis, seizures, including but not limited to seizures associated with epilepsy, severe nausea, and any other chronic pain or persistent medical condition that either limits the ability or can cause serious harm. In my assistance with my client, we found it necessary to go to Cool in Placer County with our doctor's diagnosis, where the doctor would evaluate the condition of the patient and make a recommendation that medical marijuana would assist in that condition. From that point, we got two pieces of paper, one give, one authorizing the patient to use medical marijuana, and the other authorizing a grower, which could be the patient, to grow up to a certain amount of plants. From that point, we go to the County Health Department, where we are allowed to get a medical marijuana card, and I have two, both, so you could see what they look like. Outdated. It allows the patient and the care provider access to travel anywhere in the state, and in those days, we would go to the Bay Area because there were no dispensaries in this area. And I've included my medical marijuana authorization, which I no longer use because it gets to be quite expensive, and one of the ladies commented before that these people don't look sick, all they want to do is smoke pot. Well, I've brought with you my medical marijuana, which is a salve, and I'd like to share that with you. You can open it up and smell it if you'd like to. It doesn't smell like it, you may, but it's, it's used for chronic pain, and it really didn't work. I don't have chronic pain, I have sharp shooting pain that goes up my neck and into my arm. But it can be used to be applied to arthritis joints, your shoulder, and after a while, it may alleviate some of the muscle spasms and some of the pain associated with, with What I wanted to say also is that primary caregivers have been given a great responsibility, not necessarily a right, but a responsibility. not necessarily a right, but a responsibility by which we take very seriously and feel important to maintain. Your dealings last time was with the commercialization of medical marijuana. We're going back to the first steps where it's allowed for the patient. And I thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks.
I'm gonna get my stuff.
Any other public comments?
Jeff Krovitz, Public Works Director. As you know, I've been working on a number of grants for Butte Fire restoration, and that's not what this is about. I've been utilizing some expert volunteers, retirees from our community, who have been instrumental in my ability to pursue these grants. So I do want to introduce Jan Bray and John and Ann Heiselbut. They're here to talk during public comment specifically about the future, what can be done, what they are working on in their field of interest for how we can protect ourselves against future events. Thank you.
Good morning, Board, staff, and Chairman Edson. We've met before. I have a bio of our volunteer team that I'll share with you, and you can take a look. We've been -- before the Butte Fire, we've been working on grants in both Calaveras and Amador Counties, and our goal is to improve land management in both counties. So we've been working on pieces of BLM land and also some private land in both counties prior to the Butte Fire and then post-Butte Fire as well. And we're looking at the future as far as what we can do to provide services to both counties and improve our situation so we don't have a repeat of the Butte Fire. So we will be -- I wanted to make sure that you know who we are and when you hear our name, what we're doing and why we're doing it. So we will be working in the future on a community wildfire protection plan in the McCollum watershed, and we will be coming to you for that with more information and potentially asking for a very small amount of Title III money that you get annually. So it either goes to search and rescue, Sheriff's Department, or fire safe councils. And that's essentially -- we've been in contact with both Amador Fire Safe Council and the local Calaveras foothills Fire Safe Council, and they're very supportive of what we're doing.
Great.
Any questions?
Sure. Can I get a -- do you have your contacts here so that I can -- I'd like to meet with you guys.
Okay. I'll get my business card and give that to you.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. See you then. We'll move on to our regular agenda. You want me to do whatever you take it.
The first item on the regular agenda is one that is normally done at the first board meeting and the first item, and that is the election of the 2016 Chair and Vice Chair.
It's open for the Board to speak.
So I'd like to speak, and I'd like to thank Chair Edson and Vice Chair Wright for their services last year. I think last year was an extraordinary year as a result of the Butte Fire and the way things were handled and the leadership given from our Chair and Board Chair and Vice Chair. And I thank you very much for the time and the commitment, because I know it was a lot of extra time and commitment in your roles, in your leadership roles on the Board. And with that, I'd like to nominate Chris Wright as Chair for 2016.
I can appreciate that, and I know that tradition would probably say that that's the way to go. I think everybody on the Board put their best foot forward. There was a lot of extraordinary work going on. I don't know that anyone, myself included, ever anticipated the Butte Fire. I did fully feel that there was going to be a fire, but I didn't feel it would destroy a good bit of the people in their homes that reside in this county. I know by tradition that what has been nominated by Supervisor Ponti would be the way to go, but there's been a lot of work done with the Butte Fire recovery, and we are not even halfway through it at this point. I would nominate Cliff Edson and the current leadership to stay in the place that they're in for one more year.
I have to concur with Supervisor -- excuse me, Supervisor Kearney. I view this situation, this crisis, as continuing on for at least the next couple of years, if not even longer. I think the leadership that we have in Chairman Edson and our Vice Chair, Chris Wright, needs to continue at least for the next year. I would second the nomination of Chairman Edson to continue as Chairman of the Board for the coming year.
Any other comments, you guys? Public comments?
I'm just concerned. There was a nomination on the floor, and it wasn't dealt with. And then there was a second nomination. It doesn't seem like that's the right process. I'm just -- I'm asking, like, a point of -- a point of --
Order.
Point of order. Is that?
Okay. All right. All right. We can take care of that.
Okay. Then I would also like to say, if there's time for public comments, are you going to take care of that first?
What would you like, Bonnie?
Well, I'd like to put in my two cents, as usual.
Go for it.
I think maybe we ought to clear up the situation first, whoever we're speaking to. Counselor, Vice Chair.
Ultimately, when there is a motion, you need to clear it up. It appeared that there was more discussion to be had. So what procedurally should happen is because Supervisor Ponti made a motion, we should ask for a second. If there is, in fact, a second, there needs to be public comment before any action is taken by the Board. So you can handle each motion respectively, but ultimately, before any action is taken, any vote is taken, public comment needs to be had.
All right. So --
Thank you, Counselor.
So here's what we'll do then. We'll take Supervisor Ponti's motion, Ponti's position. Is there a second? There's no point in that. Me making a second.
You can.
Well, that would be close.
You can.
No. Good. So -- Okay? So --
So I have further comment if I can make it.
Sure.
So, you know, my reason for nominating Chris Wright is that he was in a Vice Chair position this last year, and he too dealt with many issues in regards to the Butte Fire. And so I think there has been some experience in that regards in carrying forward. Mr. Wright has served in the capacity on this Board for the last three years. He has a fourth year left on his term. He has opted not to run for election. So I think he has an opportunity to be a very clear head for this next year as we look forward. The Butte Fire will be an ongoing issue. It's not going to be resolved in one year. It's probably going to be three, five, seven, ten years as we rebuild from the Butte Fire. So that's why I made the recommendation to allow for Chris to step into the leadership role and carry on as I think he can, and will do a fine job for this Board in giving us direction as we move forward into 2016. So this is no disrespect to Chair Edson, because as I noted, I think he's done a very fine job as well. And he has announced that he is running for election, so his plate will be full in doing so. And this will allow for Mr. Wright to carry forward in a Chair capacity without any concerns about election or not, and fulfilling his role as Chair. And, you know, the Butte Fire does basically represent his district in the rebuild as we look forward in the years to come.
Thank you for that, Dennis. Appreciate that.
It's true. I believe that.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think, you know, one of the good parts about the rotation is that, you know, it does give each district a chance of having that extra voice as Chair. And, you know, and I'd like that opportunity to do that. I've put in my time, and I'm going to continue to put in my time this year regardless of the Chair position. But I do think that that's the more appropriate thing to do, being that it is my district that, where the fire was devastated. So I really like that opportunity, guys. I think I'll do a good job. And my style, my style will be, you know, different than Cliff's, but I will be, you know, very dedicated, you know, to the county, you know, and to my district and the fire. And I've been participating a lot. You know, obviously, there's positions that Cliff has that I can't, you know, I can't equal some of the hard work and dedication that Cliff has. I don't think anybody can. But I am pretty effective, and I'm very dedicated and very passionate about rebuilding my district in this next year. And I just feel that, you know, District Two needs that extra voice as Chair. So I'd appreciate the opportunity if you guys give me that chance. I won't let you down.
I don't think anybody is saying anything as disrespectful of any member on this Board. I would like myself the opportunity to learn the Chair position and the responsibilities that go with it. When I, during this break, I was reminded that when I did my own tour again through the fire affected areas, how much there has to go. And honestly, Cliff has made more contact with anybody going forward, and there is a certain prestige that goes with being the Chair that gives him that contact to help some of these areas recover. This is not a lack of confidence in any member of this Board, because I believe that all of us work hard in our own way. In my area, there were churches that were stepping up, and I saw what they did, and I continue to hear from people regarding the fire. This is a step away from tradition, and I stick with my nomination. I think that it is in the best interest of the county to continue with the leadership we have. Had this not happened, I would completely agree with everything that you said, but I'm not taking away from you, Chris, and I'm not taking away from the ability that I do believe you have. I am just saying, for the good of the county, I don't think the leadership should be changed at this moment, and that's why I've made the nomination that I did.
So I need a second.
In this role, can the Chair make a second?
I thought Mike already made it.
No, he's talking about Debbie's. Debbie's --
Oh.
The Chair can always second a motion. Typically, it is not seen as a frequent practice, but if the motion would die for a lack of a second, the Chair certainly has the opportunity to second a motion.
Thank you for that clarification.
So this is one of the reasons why I will not second, because constantly, all year long, I've been put in the same position to do this. And because of -- well, part of it's my position to do that, I guess, but I think that we're in the middle of a -- it's like somebody told me, you don't change horses in the middle of a race. And we are in quite the middle of something that is extraordinary for the county. And I know that a lot of people don't -- may forget about it already, is not done. There are a lot of issues going on right now that need attention, and I think it requires attention from a source that's been consistently there. So other than that, I have no issue. So that's why I won't second. So now I can have public comments? Now I can have public comments? Thank you.
Just to be clear, it's my understanding the motion has died for lack of a second.
Well --
Supervisor Ponti's motion died for lack of a second. If there was another motion, then that can be addressed now. But again, before any motion is taken, action on, public comment needs to be had. So you can have public comment now --
I won't have public comment on the first motion. I won't have public comments on the first motion.
That was Debbie Ponti's motion. Okay. Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. You know, it's not without precedent that, you know, Vice Chair has been stepped around, I think, a few years ago, for whatever reason. Darren Spellman was a Vice Chair and did not become Chairman of the Board. So it's a fairly recent happening, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I appreciate, you know, all the Board's work. Supervisor Wright obviously has a heavier load to lift up in his district, and, you know, I think without the burdens of being the Chair, he can do more to help the people of his district recover from the terrible tragedy that we've been through. It's also unique that we have so many new supervisors on the Board, where we can't look to someone who's been around for a while to take advantage of their experience, to see us through until some more experience can be gained. You know, I understand why it's going this way, and I completely agree with you. And, you know, we'll see what happens on the next motion. So I hope it goes the way it seems to be going. Thank you.
I have some problems and issues with this. I see this as an attempt to be self-serving and selfish and greedy in an attempt to retain power and control. I think it's time to share leadership. I do not think that the past year's leadership has been all that stellar. I have seen bullying occur. I have seen people shut up and shut down and yet allow certain people to have additional time to express themselves, and that was at our Chair's decision. And for that reason, I think it's time for new leadership. I think it's time that we have a chance to experience all the skills that all the members of this Board have, and we will be able to balance that. Otherwise, we're going to have two years of the same situation. And yes, we did disallow Darren Spellman, but he had shown himself to be a complete goofball on the forum as well as in the audience, not concerned with the welfare and the community's needs, but rather his own self-serving agenda. And I see this an attempt to thwart the regular method that we've all experienced, that all the members of this committee have a chance to show their leadership qualities in the position of Chair, and to disallow somebody for no apparent reason except somebody's biases, I think is a slap in the face to the members of this community and an insult to the voters of Calaveras County. to the voters of Calaveras County.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Mark Bolger, Mountain Ranch. As someone that lives in District Two and lost a great deal during the fire, I've been more than impressed and touched by everyone on the board's actions. Supervisor Wright, before the fire, during the fire, after the fire, has lent an extreme amount of emotional support, of physical help, to everybody in our community. I respect the board's decision on this, but I would like to say that I agree with Supervisor Ponte. Supervisor Wright has done an amazing job, as well as Chairman Edson and everyone, but I personally would like to see our district get the extra representation or ability that the position of chair that would award Supervisor Wright. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Any other public comments?
Good morning. George Frye. I support Supervisor Ponte. I think that it should rotate. I think that Chris should have the opportunity for his district to have him as the chair in rotation. I think that, no, no offense to the chair, the current chair, and the two supervisors that support him being the chair for another year, that's not where I'm coming from. I would like to see Chris be the chair, and so, like I said, the people that elected him have the opportunity for him to help his constituents, see him get the job done that needs to be done in his district, given the fact that most of the fire was in his district, and the fact that the chair, by the very nature of being the chair, obviously had to step up. It would be totally inappropriate if he had not stepped up during the course of the Butte Fire. And obviously, he did, and he did an excellent job in stepping up. But I don't think we ought to go out of the rotation. I absolutely agree with the fact that Darren Spellman was not elected chair. There's no way I could have agreed to that, and everybody in this room probably wouldn't have agreed to that. But you have somebody here that worked tirelessly for the people in his district during the Butte Fire, and not to elect him the chair after he's been the vice chair and worked very hard, that's, that's really disappointing to me, very disappointing to me. And I hope you folks change your mind.
Thank you, George. Any other public comments? Any other board comments?
I have a comment. I'd like to clear something up. The decision I've made supporting Supervisor Kearney's motion has no reflection on the ability, on Supervisor Wright's ability to do this job, in reference to prior supervisors. Decision was made on the basis of, once again, staying with a team through a crisis and sitting it through at least for the next year. I hope you understand that, Chris. Thank you.
No, I don't, I don't understand it. I, I think that we, in fact, if you, you guys may not remember, but when Cliff became chair the last year, basically, we sat here and said, okay, you be chair this year, and I'll be chair next year. That was the agreement we reached. And, you know, that's, that was, that was what we talked about last year. And so now to be like, oh, well, we're just gonna keep it like this, it just seems, it just seems, just not the way to, to do business, not the way to do business at all. And I think that we should continue with the rotation, because that's what we've agreed on. He said, think I can do the job? I think I can do the job. We'll see. You know? I think that Cliff is not gonna go anywhere. He's still gonna be here for this next year. He's still gonna be able to help. It's not rocket science, you know? It's not like he's, has special degrees that, you know, is needed for this. I've been involved on many levels, and I know I've done a lot of work in my district and outside of my district that I don't advertise, because that's not who I am. And I'm also not running for reelection, so I don't advertise. That's part of the, you know, you guys know that. But I just think that we, we agreed on this last year, I would be chair, and I think that I should be chair this year. Any other comments?
No, I would just, I would hope that we could move forward and have Chris as chair in 2016. I think he demonstrates leadership qualities, as any of us would on this board. And District Two was drastically hit by this fire, and giving the citizens of District Two an opportunity to have a leadership role on this board would be a good thing. And, you know, the leadership on this board is not just the Butte Fire. There are many things that go into the leadership role on the board, and, and I think Chris has that capacity to, to be broad-based about it. I mean, we're also faced with this year's challenges of the general plan, and doubtful be done this year, but let's hope we're one step closer. We also have our leadership of the Sheriff's Department for consideration. We have our budget as we look at 2016 and 17, and we're not sure how the effects of the Butte Fire is going to hit the budget, but, you know, we have just many issues facing the board. And, you know, I think continuity is good, and I think we have that. Chris has been the vice chair. He's been aware of it. And, you know, I believe he can establish and reestablish these relationships we have with the other agencies and such. So, you know, I just don't see any reason why, why we can't move forward and have Chris as our chair.
Is this about the comment?
Yes. Go ahead.
Rosemary Wilson, McCullum Hill. Sorry I'm late. I was experiencing driving a U-Haul for the second time up from Arnold, and it seems like I've, I've just come at, well, I don't know what to make of it. I didn't, obviously, I didn't see the, or hear the, the initial, but to come in and there, there being a motion, or about to be a motion on the table, that, that somehow the normal way of handing over the, the chair position from one, the supervisor that used to be the, the vice chair, and, and somehow changing that, I don't see any reason to change that. I, I just don't see it. And I think that, you know, it, it can't be because Chris isn't, is presumably not standing for another, another term. This is, this is this coming term. I would be in favor of, of Chris staying on for, for a second term, but that's, that's for him. But I don't see why, why Cliff, Cliff is still gonna be here. Chris is, is as perfectly a capable supervisor that I've seen on the board. I, and I've been unfortunately, or fortunately, coming to these meetings for multiple years. And I think it's a slight on Chris's achievements within the, the district, and I don't see why he, he can't be supervise, not supervise, the chairman of the board this time. I just don't see it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? So once again, it comes down to me making those tough decisions, right? And so, you know, and I get to sit here and, and it's hard to work as I've done this year, and I, and I know that some people don't recognize it, which is fine, because I know what, what I did. And I believe that I was here through the whole fire, the whole thing. So, no, we weren't all here, Bonnie. So I have issues around that. When District Two caught on fire, everybody ended in, ended up in, all over the place. Jackson, up in Debbie's area, up in Angels Camp, and largely in District One. That's where they came. And, no, they didn't want to. They had no choice. And so, and it was being managed as best as we could, but on every single day, we were out there doing that. So I think it's important to, to, to those folks to know that they had somebody there for them. And it's something that I'm not gonna ever forget. So the, the county is, in my opinion, needs to move forward. We economically are in peril condition, so we should welcome opportunities for that, and in some cases, we haven't. So I guess it's just a, a matter of dedication and philosophies. And that's, and so no matter, and I can tell you right now, no matter what I say on this deal, some people are always gonna disagree with me, always. And that's just the way it is, and I can't help that. But I have responsibility to the county, and I have responsibility to each, each district, actually, because I work for the county, the whole county, my district and the rest of the county too. And it was never more apparent until this Butte Fire came along. And so I seen who stepped up to the plate on that. And it's important that, in a situation, this could happen again, then what? We are in the middle of something that is, has to do with people's lives, responsibility for people's lives. And we're making decisions for people's lives, and we have been through this whole thing. I take that very, very seriously. And we have watched our, the decline of our, even before the fire, of our economics, jobs, the schools, and all of that. And we continue, and we have continued in the past, to push away opportunity. And I'm afraid of that happening. I don't want that to happen again. So it's a, just a, a different way of looking at things, I guess. So I do have one thing I want to say if you're gonna. So I do, do appreciate all the work you've done, and there are, there's a lot of work to do. And I would have to thank all the emergency responders during the fire, CAL FIRE, and our local fire departments did an amazing job with this fire. Just an absolutely amazing job. And, and I think what's going on here is that Cliff really wants to do the right thing. He really wants, and he really, I do believe this is what he thinks is the best thing for the county. And that having a healthy ego is part of being a leader, being a supervisor. But there's also a time when you push beyond that, and it's no longer healthy. And that's what I'm afraid is happening here, is that Cliff is taking on too much responsibility for things that are really beyond his, his position and his, his role in our community. And I think if you try to take that power on, you're going to, you know, and it's hard for me, because there's not a lot of power in the chair, position, so it's not like he's gonna be corrupted by all the power. But there is a certain level of, of, you know, that, that power is, is not a good thing to be concentrated in one individual, and that's why we have our, our system of government. And so by giving him this board chair a second time, I think it's a bad precedent going in the future. I mean, that's why we have this rotation now, is because we don't wanna see one individual take over the county. And, and I don't think Cliff's gonna do that, but the problem is, is that you can kinda see, you can see that he thinks that without him at the chair, things are gonna fall apart or not move forward, and that's just not gonna happen. What's gonna happen is if me or him not in the chair, and none of us in this chair, things are still gonna move forward, because there's hundreds and not thousands of people working, not only for the Butte recovery, but also making this county a better place. So I just think that it, it's important not to give too much power or, or whatever you wanna call it to this position, but it's, and at the same time, you know, there isn't a lot of power in the position. So it's kind of a contradictory statement there. But, you know, I, I think that it's, the, the rotation is, is a wise, wise thing that people do. Otherwise, you just have, you know, Cliff's gonna be the chair until he resigns, doesn't wanna run again, or is defeated. I mean, be chair for the next four, 10 years? I mean, we're always gonna have problems in the county. So, I mean, I would, I would, I would support, you know, skipping over me as vice chair and then going to one of you guys to, to take the position, rather than having Cliff, not any disrespect to Cliff, but just that that position should be a rotational position. So if you don't want me there, maybe we could have, you know, Steve or Mike there, or Debbie again, she was just there not long ago, so, one of those, those guys.
Chris, I, I, it's not, not wanting you. Being in the district adjacent to Cliff's district, I can tell you many times in the last months, there have been things that I have focused on to take responsibility off of him, and in turn, he's done things right from the get-go. He is the supervisor who stood up and said, why are we placing the CAL FIRE headquarters in Plymouth? And they got that moved before anybody else could, could get to it, and he's had more contact with what is going on up there than anybody. And District One did get burned also. There are issues up there, and he has had more contact with government officials beyond the body of the Board of Supervisors. This is not a slam on your ability at all, and I would not want you skipped over. If you were to run for reelection and re-elected, I would certainly support the next time having you go into the position. And who knows? Maybe you change your mind, and that's what does transpire. I can't tell you that. My recommendation is beyond.
I can definitely reassure you there. I'm not running for reelection. I'm not running for reelection.
Well, okay, and you have said that. My recommendation is based on the inside look of what has transpired, of the connections to the recovery from the Butte fire, and who has made more contact than myself or anybody up here with those who will progress the county going forward. I would not do this a year into this, providing that we recover. We have, we have lost hundreds of homes. This is not like anything this county has ever faced. And honestly, the contact that has been made by the chair needs to continue until we get through this. And that's why I made the recommendation. It was not a lack of confidence in you. Had the Butte fire not happened, I would have probably been happy to see you in the position. That is, that is why I have asked for this. I have seen the inside of what's been going on. And I have not had nearly the contact with the recovery that the chair has. I think this county has got to come through this so that we can go forward. And that's why I have nominated, no change, including you as the vice chair, of which, although my nomination does not cover that at this time, I don't want to see a change in either one of you in what you do. I think the county needs some stability in the leadership, and I don't believe that Cliff is going to be a chair for another five years.
Well, we can't really say that because look what we said last year.
I can say I don't believe it. I can say that.
So, you know, the role of the chair is to lead and conduct the meetings, to establish the agenda, to represent the board as a whole. I see if, you know, whatever these relationships are, should be with all board members, with these agencies and such. But more importantly, if there's work that's been going on in a different committee or organization related to Butte, or any other organization that we represent, then I think the chair would be most appropriate in saying, "You continue in that role. You continue being the lead representative in the ad hoc committee for this, or the CAL OES FEMA meetings," or whatever it might be. I mean, to me, that is what a good chair does, is kind of distribute that and give some equal opportunity to all to participate. And I think that's what Chris can bring to the table. It's not to say that if Cliff has been working on a particular project or with a particular committee, whether it's Butte Fire or anything else, that that wouldn't continue. That's not always the chair of the role, role of the chair.
That could be delegated, yeah?
Yeah. It doesn't have to fall on one person. I mean, all of us have our districts to represent, in addition to looking at the county as a whole, whether it's economic development, whether it's looking at a new sheriff, whether it's hiring a department head, establishing policy, whatever it might be. So, you know, there seems to be this perception that as board chair, you're chair and responsible for all of these things, and that's just not true.
I don't, I don't think I said that a bit. In fact, I said I have taken-
You said relationships that have been established by the chair need to continue.
Well, I believe that that's true. The chair would have more access to that. And we're talking about relationships with FEMA, CAL OES. Cliff has established the relationships with them better than anybody, partially because he's here.
But Steve, we all have at different levels.
I don't think I said anything different than that.
Okay. Well, I, I'm hearing you say that Cliff is the only one who has a relationship with these agencies.
I'm, I'm saying that he has invested in having a relationship with these agencies, and they know him. And we have a county that is in the middle of a recovery, and I, we've had forest fires here, but we've never had anything like this. And that is why I nominated him, because I want that contact to continue so that next year at this time, we're not recreating something, we have finished what we've started.
I once again support the position and second on the motion Supervisor Kearney. I have been in those situations where those contacts, that influence paid off for the betterment of this county, especially during the Butte fire. But I've also listened to my constituents. I've heard what they've said, and I take those words to me my direction in my decisions. And I stand by my decision to second the nomination for Supervisor Edson. And once again, there's no reflection on the abilities of Supervisor Wright. I hope he would continue as vice chair and continue doing the work he's doing. But once again, we have the county of Calaveras to think about, not just our districts.
What about the commitment made last year between Chris and-
I'm sorry, we haven't got to that part yet.
Well, are you going to talk about it? There was a commitment made last year between Chris and-
Come up to the mic, George.
I just want to know about the commitment that was made last year when I was here between Chris and Cliff.
Okay.
Can we respond to that? Or do we have to, or are we required to?
You can if you want to.
Can we?
You can if you want to.
Yeah, that commitment was made between Cliff and, I mean Supervisor Edson and Supervisor Wright. Supervisor Kearney and I were not part of that conversation or agreement. I was unaware of any commitment other than till mentioned today. Would you?
No.
It's not, it's a board's commitment.
No, I understand all of that.
If you're going to speak, come up to the mic, George.
You know, I didn't just fall off the turnip truck. I understand all of that. I'm sorry that you didn't hear that last year. But I heard it, and I was sitting in the audience. I want to know if these two gentlemen are going to honor the commitment. If they're going to honor the commitment, then I don't think there's any question about the rotation of the chair. That's what I want to know. It's nothing personal.
It's a fair question, George, but my nomination is not based on that, nor was it aware of it.
I understand that. I want to hear who goes to the gentleman. I think I have a right.
So, there were a lot of commitments last year. Lots of, you don't want to hear this, George? There were a lot of commitments last year. There was commitments in, in doing the work of the county. My memory is mostly of the past three months, because that's what I've been inundated with, really. You know, I, I have heard a lot of things that, I don't want to talk bad about Chris. I just won't do it. I think he's a great guy. He's a great guy. I have always felt friendly with him, and a friendship. Has nothing to do with that. You know, you go to a meeting, a public meeting, a board meeting, and you stand up and you say, "Take your money and take your business and go somewhere else." Is that something that we should do as a board chair?
If necessary.
Really?
Yes.
That's the way to handle things? Okay.
If necessary.
So, you know, what about the rest of the board? Do they matter? You know, you guys can get up and speak as often as you want. This is important, and I want to get all of it out. Go.
The agreement that was made, the commitment, was not only between you, but it was to the entire community. That's why we're sitting here with our mouths hanging open, how you could bypass what is the natural flow of things with the idea that it has to continue the way it has been. It may need a different viewpoint, a different direction in order to be better. Because you, you folks, I think you're too close to the forest to see the trees. How it looks from out here is a vote of no confidence and giving Cliff unnecessary control, unnecessary power. And when Chris declined to make the, to second the nomination, it was almost cowardly to not put it to a vote. I mean, it was like to stop the process because you're not willing to give up your position of power, position of control. Let's not call it power, let's call it control. Because I have seen a lot of control used in this boardroom, and I'm wondering how it's reflecting in the community, because it's not looking like a democracy. It's not looking democratic. It's looking like a power trip. That's what it's looking like. And it's really disappointing. And for the rest of you folks to sit there and think it's fine and that it needs to be done, you couldn't be wronger. It does not need to be done in this manner. We need new leadership. It's time to change, to pass the gavel, pass the torch, change ownership of this forum here. We expect the transfer of power because that's the way it's been accepted in the past. When that doesn't happen, it's for a reason. Not because somebody is not capable, it's because somebody is incapable. And that's why Mr. Spellman was not offered the leadership, because he was not representing himself in a manner that the people wanted to see. He was representing himself almost like a clown, and it was an embarrassment. Chris has never represented himself in that way, and for you to deny him leadership at this time is not only disappointing, and I'll say it again, it's, it's an insult to the voters who have all elected you to be fair and equitable, but are not seeing fair inequitability being shared.
Just a quick-
I could go on. Yes.
Oh, I was just going to comment on the not seconding my motion. It's just not, you don't, if you're being nominated for chair, you got to have three votes.
Yes.
So, if somebody, you know, nominates me and there's no second from somebody besides myself, I'm not going to have three votes. So, there's, there's no point in me seconding that motion and then going to vote and-
I think she was talking about me being cowardly there, Chris.
Well, I was just explaining the, you know, my thought of it.
Well, seconding a motion doesn't mean you have to vote for it.
No.
But to not take that process was just like cutting someone off at the knees, cutting the community off at the knees. You know, we have expectations of you all, maybe unrealistic. We've got opportunities that have been squandered, and then we have things that are being shoved down our throat. I've been watching the planning commission. What poor representation we have on this planning commission. This is an insult to our entire community. They are gutting everything that, all the values that people in rural areas have for the sake of an industry that may be dangerous. And I think that's what you were referring to. Are we telling people to take their business elsewhere? Yes, we are telling people to take your damn toxins and poisons and stick them somewhere else. We didn't come here to have to breathe the same air that they're breathing in Stockton and LA. So, we do have very unrealistic expectations because we're not seeing our needs being addressed and our issues being addressed. I'm sorry, I'm going on too long. And I could go on.
Okay. I wasn't talking about them, actually, Bonnie. Talking about Castle &amp; Cook.
I'm waiting on you.
Bill McManus, Sanford Hill. I didn't quite expect it to unfold this way today. I don't have anything against any of the supervisors. Very rarely has, have more than two of you ever agreed with anything the way I feel. And that seems to rotate around, with the exception, of course, of Supervisor Wright. We don't agree on anything. But your predecessor, I didn't agree with him on anything, and that was Steve Lewinsky.
I'm sure we could find something.
I doubt it, but we don't, we don't need to go there. But one thing I will say about your predecessor from District Two, Steve Lewinsky, that even though we, we never agreed on anything, he was one of the most respectful public servants I have ever seen. And I told him that on the day he left, that I appreciated his demeanor, I appreciated his even handedness on the board, and that we would never agree on anything, but we, that I would agree that he was one of the better supervisors that we've ever had. And it's because of the way he interacts with the public. Now, if there's some sort of side agreement someplace, I don't care about that. You know, it doesn't involve me, doesn't involve anyone else. Right now, we have a county that's in crisis. We're looking for a way to get through it. Supervisor Wright is not going to run for reelection. So, this may be a problem that continues on and on a little bit longer. I don't know. I think it's a wise choice to ask Cliff. I'm surprised Cliff took it. It's, can't be an easy job. But, you know, our Supervisor Edson took the job or said, "Yeah, I'll do it one more time and see if we can get through this." And maybe the intensity of the job will start to diminish after another year, and then whoever's vice chair or another supervisor can step up and start learning from Supervisor Edson how to get through it so that we can wrap this thing up in the years ahead. And the Butte fire will be behind us. On a personal note, as far as demeanor, I have never been insulted by a supervisor on this board, with the exception of Supervisor Wright. And I think that his antics sometimes are insulting. I think he shows, from time to time, a disrespect for the public that comes before him. I know we're a pain in the rear, but that's kind of our job too. And I was insulted that I had to stop my comments to wait for the antics to end. And that's not, that's not a major criticism. It's just that it's the first time I've ever seen a supervisor do that. And so, you know, I'm not willing to bet money I don't have. I think that the supervisors that we have here that are in, in the rotation, whatever you guys decided is, are fine. You know, and I'm hoping Cliff will get a chance to lead the county forward, and I hope Mike and Steve and whoever else is going to be on the board for a while will learn from Cliff so that they can, you can pass the torch without having to lose that continuity of leadership. So, I think it's courageous that a couple of board members have recognized that. I think it's courageous and generous that Supervisor Edson has agreed to do it, and I hope that's the way it turns out. Thank you.
I've almost forgotten what I was going to say. But I'm, I'm not taking this as a, as a personal thing. I mean, you, you might like the face of one person, prefer over the face of someone else. But this, this is a, you were all elected by your district. And for as long as I have known, although I didn't realize what Bonnie had said, I don't know if that's true about Mr. Spellman. But it's generally accepted, surely, that the vice chair takes on, you have a rotation, each person has a, an equal opportunity to excel or otherwise on the positions that they're, that they take on. And I'm surprised, is there nothing in the, in whatever county regulations or such, Meghan? You're shaking your head. You're shaking your head.
The board rules and regulations are silent on this subject, but it's been the history, historic practice that the vice chair is voted as chair the following or subsequent year. That's been the historic practice, but there isn't anything in writing.
And I don't think any of you are, are irreplaceable. And there's no guarantees that, that Chris is, or any of us are gonna be around next week, let alone in a, a whole year's time.
Maybe by the end of the meeting.
This afternoon even, the way things are going. I just think that, that the vice chair should take over and no one's irreplaceable and no one's not dispensable. I mean, I've known that through, through working in, in the, the career that I've, that I've taken for, for better or worse. You know, good, and the last point is that the, the, the history of the, the Butte, we've only just, the Butte Fire, we've only just started. These landslides can continue for, that nothing might happen. It might all be good and then one year, three, five, seven years down the road, there's gonna be a landslide. Are we all gonna be looking for, for, for Cliff to step forward? Or are we all gonna be looking for, for, for our current director of public works to sort things out? He may have moved on in the, in the same way as, as, as life goes. People come and they go. And I don't think that there should be a, a, a change in what has been going on with regard to the handing over the, the chair position to the vice chair. And then a couple of years, you know, next year it'll be, Stephen Michael that will be in presumably will be chair of, of vice chair.
Maybe we'll do District Two that time.
Hope we're gonna do District Two this, this time, but-
Okay. Any other public comments? All right. So I got a question for you, Chris. So, I mean, other than it being a rotation and, and that's, why, why do you want it? Well, I mean, what I'll do, uh, you know, is continue to work on the things that I've been working on as supervisor. As chair, uh, some of the priorities that we face, obviously the Butte Fire recovery is, you know, from the district standpoint and also from the county standpoint, probably the biggest thing up there. So we're gonna have to be looking at, you know, restoration as well as rebuilding. And I'm a, and I have a lot of, uh, history in planning. I know a lot of contacts and agencies. And I'm a really easygoing guy 95% of the time. And so I think with my background, my current work, which I'm gonna be doing even if I'm not chair, will, will really help with that. I also, I think on the, outside of the fire, you know, economic development is a critical component to, to this. And so looking to build on the economy, but also recognizing, like my statement to Castle &amp; Cook, um, you know, they, they have, they're a Fortune 500 development company and they're coming to us. And I do admit, um, you know, I probably could have been a little bit more polite to them. But he's coming to us saying that they need breaks on development fees because it's too expensive to develop here. When you look around, any other county in the region is more expensive than Calaveras County. And, and to me, I, I don't wanna give handouts to multi-million dollar, billion dollar companies to do business here. I want them to come here and do business here, but I want them to pay their fair share. Um, and I think economic development, that's what you have to do. Otherwise, you don't have the infrastructure you need to support your community. And so it's not a, uh, and, and so I think economic development is utilizing what we have here in Calaveras County. Another important thing is to make sure we get a good medical marijuana ordinance in place. I think that's absolutely critical to going forward. That's a real possibility of economic development. It's a lot of people that are already here and part of the community. And if we get a good ordinance there, hopefully we can then come along and tax that and, and bring in more revenue for the county to help with rebuilding. Other thing that, that Cliff brought up last year and that people have been talking about for a long time is the RCD. So I look forward to pushing that forward. We do have a long haul getting that actually approved by the voters, but I do 100% support that, so I'd be bringing that forward. As well as the general plan, you know, I think the general plan is languishing in, in the process. And what I would do if I was chair, I would push really hard to set a timetable, a specific timetable, work with Peter Maurer at the planning department and say, you know, look, we need to bring this forward now. We need to get this done now. We can't continue to have endless meetings at the planning commission level. We need to bring it forward and we need to set a date, April 1st, May 1st, whatever that date he can do, March 1st, you know? Bring the plan forward and let's get that done. So those are some of the things that I would work on as, as board chair. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So, um, one of the things that I do like is that our planning commission is taking the general plan and going through it line item by line item. Because there's a lot of hidden little things in there that can harm us in the future economically. And so, uh, I, and I, I condone that. I think that's a, a great way to do business. You just don't bring a contract, maybe some people do, they get a contract in front of them and then they sign it without reading it. And then they live with the consequences. You can't do that because there are consequences in there. And usually it's those little things that will bite you pretty hard. Now, um, so I see for the first time in quite a few years, uh, the county moving forward with the general plan and a general plan that actually makes sense. I'm not gonna go to Peter Maurer and say, Peter, you gotta rush it up here because he's working as hard as he can, I guarantee you. That's what he's doing. It's not just Peter, but it's also county council, it's admin, it's all kinds of other departments that go into that. And so it's just not as easy as that.
Well-
I am, I am a pushy, I am a pushy person. I admit that.
Yeah.
I'm not done yet. I'll finish and then you can go.
Okay.
So, uh, as far as economic development goes, uh, the RCD is something that Chris actually brought me into it. I didn't even know what an RCD was. And so I went to a meeting and then I studied up on it and then I brought it forward. He had the same opportunities to bring it forward, I did. But he didn't. I did. And I got it through LAFCO and, and now it's going forward. There are many, many things like that. You have to be on the ball all the time. During, during the Butte Fire, first four days, somebody was absent and they were moving their family to, to Wollomee. I understand that. But I had constituents from District Two calling me for answers and me for support. And McCollum Hill was shut down with power and they needed power in, in, um, Hotel Agia so that we could house some of the, some of the responders because there's 13 rooms there. That has nothing to do with being a board chair or not being a board chair or being, it's, it's, it has something to do with paying attention to what needs to go on. That's what hap, that's what needs to happen. So I just happened to be in the position where I was in the middle of it all. I remember getting a email because I told Chris everything I did. And I tried to involve Chris. And I remember getting an email from Chris. Chris says, "Thank you, you're a great man." That's, that was his email to me. All right? That's nothing about ego or anything like that. That's just him thanking me. And yet I hear about, out here about what, what members say about there's an ego thing going on. It's not about ego, it's about moving our county forward in a direction where we need to go. Because we are, we're close to disappearing economically. So there are many things that I could keep going on about. Watershed program, which I asked Chris to be a part of. Then he stopped being a part of it. But he moved it to, I think, Sierra Nevada Conservancy, right?
Can I go now?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, thank you. So with the RCD, uh, one of the, the major hurdles that me and my team of folks, we looked at was the, you know, getting it passed. Not this board or, or LAFCO, but, uh, through, uh, the, the public. And in order to do that, it's similar like the TOT process is you have to have a team in place to be able to run that campaign. And, and so you really have to, you know, weigh, you know, if you're gonna do that or not. And it was, you know, our determination that that wasn't the, the, the realistic thing, the realistic approach at the time. Uh, and I still think that we're gonna run into that problem moving forward is getting the RCD approved by the, by the public. It is, it's gonna require, um, somebody, a team of people to lead that campaign. And, and so, you know, that's, that's why, you know, when Cliff says he pushed it through, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that he has in his back pocket, um, you know, a plan for that. And, and maybe he does. And, and I do say that Cliff is a great man. I think Cliff is a great man. But that doesn't mean I think he should be chair again. Um, you know, I don't think anybody should continue to be chair, nobody in this room. I think it should be a one-time, uh, one-year event rotating each year. And that's why I would, uh, you know, nominate one of these guys here over Cliff i- if the board didn't, didn't like, uh, didn't, wanted to support Cliff again. I think, I just think that's a mistake. As far as the watershed project, uh, I think that's a very good concept that Cliff's been developing. I'm 100% behind that, 100%. But there's a lot going on out there that is on the ground already. And it's important that we recognize the stuff that's on the ground, the people out there, maybe not today, but most non-rainy days, crews of people through the CHIPS program that are clearing brush in our communities. So, and that's just one program. Uh, there's a lot going on out there. And so I'm involved in a lot of them on many different levels. Uh, and I'm still supportive of the watershed project, uh, that, that he's working on. I mean, any, everything he says about it, how can you argue with it? I mean, it makes sense. But, you know, there's no reason not to embrace everybody working on reducing, uh, you know, especially reducing our fuel loads. We need to be completely encompassing, all-encompassing on that. And as far as the, the Butte, uh, the actual fire, um, yeah, I did, I did, I was evacuated from my house and in District Two. Uh, the fire got about, probably about half mile from my house. There's embers, uh, in my ash covered, uh, you know, all over my house. And it was a really scary moment for my family. And so I was with my family during that time. And, and so I'm thankful that Cliff was, as board chair, able to help there. But that, that doesn't mean he should be chair again because he did a great job. It's not like a, this is, this is a rotational thing because each person, each district needs that representation. Um, and that's the, the real, uh, the real crux of the argument here is not how good great Cliff is, but, um, shouldn't it be rotating each year for that district to have that, that extra voice? And I, I feel really strongly about that. And I, and I wish that my fellow board members would, would agree to that. But apparently, um, I don't have the vote, so, you know, I always say, uh, in local government, if you can count to three, you're golden. I can only count to two, so let's, uh, let's, uh, call for a vote.
I've probably come to more board meetings than maybe anybody else besides board members over the years, starting back in 1978. Not on a regular basis back then, but as long as I can remember, the, um, vice chair has always become the next chair. The only time that it's not happened is when Mr. Spellman was not selected the chair when he was the vice chair. And I believe in my heart of hearts that the purpose of the vice chair becoming the chair and the rotation around was to give every district the opportunity for their district to have their ch, their supervisor be the chair. And I don't know how many of the new supervisors really and truly understand that. And I don't mean that disrespectfully. I've lived here 38 years and, um, I think whoever made that decision long before I was ever here as a board made the correct decision. And I'd like to see the correct decision continue to, to move on. And nobody's going to blame you if you remove your second and remove your first and look at it from the standpoint of the fact that every district should have the opportunity for their supervisor to be the chair. The vice chair is pretty close as, every bit as knowledgeable about the Butte Fire because the impact was mostly in his district. And I agree with Supervisor Ponti. And she speaks from not only three years of experience on the board supervisors, but she speaks from eight years as the mayor of the City of Angels. And I absolutely agree with her that people are given assignments. And if Cliff doesn't become a supervisor, the chair of the supervisors again, then his role can be that of somebody who's in charge of the rest of the Butte Fire operation. He has all the contacts. He knows all the players. Who's better suited than him? When Mr. Kearney started out with the Area 12 on aging, he didn't know anything. Why would I want him to switch out? Only to have somebody else who needs to learn. And you could go on and on and on. I think you're all belaboring the real point here. And the real point is that it needs to have each district have the opportunity for their supervisor to be the chair. It was set out like that. This is when Spellman was not appointed and understandably so. That was the first time in the 38 years that I've- That was the first time in the thirty-eight years that I've been here that I have not seen a person who is the vice chair not elected the chair. And I'm concerned that it's gonna set a precedence. And we're gonna get some person that gets in there as the chair and gets in there a second or a third time. And we're never gonna get that person out.
I have one question and one comment, I hope. Is the RCD the Resource Conservation District? Is that what, put RC, okay. Then comments made about the general plan, uh, being changed to protect us. Well, um, it could, the changes could protect us and they could hurt us. And the general plan was not a slap-dash contract that was just thrown together. It was years and years in the making. One thing that we really need, the public, the voters of this county really need to see is that mentee or harness report. We've been hearing that, um, it's useless. Well, somebody's making that decision and you're not relying upon the P- the voters of this county to make their own decision. Without that information, we're taking somebody's word for it, who we may not trust. So it's very important that, that all the information regarding the general plan, the changes that are being made, the recommendations, that all needs to be out in the open. Otherwise, somebody's hiding something, somebody's trying to cover something up, or somebody's trying to protect somebody. We need to have that information so we can make an informed decision ourselves. That's our role, to get the information.
Okay, so are we talking about, uh, this, our nomination here, or?
Well, yeah, but we were talking about the general plan and also about your, your appointees to the Planning Commission and how disappointing some of their decisions are made, uh, have been made. But that's a big part of this whole thing. And you folks do have the, have the authority and power, control, to allow us all of that information. We want it, we need it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Any board comments? What are you showing?
I was just providing the chair with the actual, with the rules regarding the annual selection of the chair and the powers of the chair. Um, it doesn't discuss this, this issue specifically, like I had previously indicated. It's just been historic practice. But I just wanted to show the chair what, what the actual language was. If the chair would like, I can read it into the records of the public notes.
Could you? Yes, that would be better.
Rule seven, annual selection of the chair and vice chair. At the first regular meeting after January first of each year, the board shall nominate and elect from its membership a chair and vice chair. The chair shall call the meeting to order and the first order of business shall be the election of officers for the ensuing calendar year. The chair and vice chair shall, shall serve until the election of their successors. Rule eight, powers of chair and vice chair. Um, the chair shall serve as presiding officer of the board, rule on questions of procedure, and execute official board records and documents presented by the county administrative officer and clerk. In the absence or unavailability of the chair, the vice chair shall call the meeting or order, meeting to order, and serve as presiding officer. The vice chair shall have and exercise all powers and duties of the chair for meetings over which he or she is called to preside and at ceremonial or official functions which the chair cannot attend. That is the function of the chair and the vice chair.
Okay, clear. Alright, so I have, um, motion by, who made the motion?
I did.
Supervisor Kearney, second by Supervisor Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Done, thank you.
So who's the vice chair?
I'd like, uh, who, I need a nomination for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, this time I'd like to nominate Supervisor Wright for vice chair.
Okay. Do I have another second on that?
I second the motion.
Alright, public comments? Board comments?
Chris, do you think you can serve in that capacity for another year?
We'll see. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. So we're gonna take a five-minute, or a ten-minute break.
So again, at the first meeting of, uh, the calendar year, um, the board, um, goes through the committee assignments for various supervisors. Uh, the board clerk has attached to your board packet what the two thousand fifteen, um, committee assignments were and, uh, a blank sheet. Now, I'm not sure whether the board wants to, um, just address any changes or whether they wanna leave the assignments the same. Um, it will be up to the board how they wanna discuss this.
Okay. I'll, um, more than, more than happy to, uh, just keep everything as it is if you would want.
I, I think I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I wanna talk about one assignment here. CSAC. Supervisor Wright and I had an agreement, uh, beginning of last year that I would take the CSAC position, he would be the alternate. And our agreement for this year would, he would take the position of the membership there and I would be the alternate. I just, I just wanna make sure that
Yeah, but you can
that's still good.
You can keep it if you want. I can be the alternate.
Are you sure?
Yeah. No problem.
But
I mean, unless somebody else won't.
Are you sure, Cliff?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that
That's fine.
No, it's you, uh
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy being the alternate.
I was at that board, yeah. I'm sorry. Okay. Great, um, and I have one other issue with, uh, CCOG. Uh, we did have a representation issue on this past few couple of months, uh, we did get that squared away. And I have some concern about all the, all the districts being represented. And it's my understanding that District Five, I take that back. District One would be Supervisor Edson's.
That's close.
Yeah. Has no representation on that board. And I'd like to see that all districts be represented on that board. Comments?
We currently have one opening on COG.
We have an opening?
That has not been filled. The alternate position has not been filled on COG.
Okay.
This is board assignments, not
It's still there.
This is, this is the board assignments.
But I think Debbie is, is stating that there's opportunity for, for that, uh, position to be a District One person.
Right, no, that's what I'm asking is that the regular position be a District One.
Yeah. Uh, I, I could go out and solicit and find somebody to, to be interested in that.
So for the board assignments to the council of governments, i- is the board wanting to change that or remain the same?
No, I believe what Mr. Olivera is referring to, and correct me if I'm wrong, he liked to see me off COG because he feels District Four is represented with the City of Angels two representatives and myself, who currently resides and represents for. And he liked to see a balance of districts.
Correct.
I believe that's what he's referring to.
Don't you have a citizen member on that board?
The COG board did, as a COG board
Right.
Yes, appoint a citizen member who lives in District Four and works in District One and commutes all over the county.
Yeah. My suggestion is that things seem to be going pretty well as far as our committee assignments go. And we just had a long, uh, session. So I would suggest Brand-bruiser. Uh, I would suggest we just continue with what we have this year and then, you know, come back at the next year, have at least one different board member.
I, I do have some concern about having all districts represented. It's a very important, uh, COG plays a very important part in this county, for the county and for the City of Angels. And the Supervisor Ponti's doing a great job, it's just no reflection on you. I just like, I'd like to have all the districts represented and I understand that District One is not represented, as you meant.
You can find somebody to do that, right?
You know, it's an application process, so it's not really, Cliff can certainly, as any of us on this board, can ask folks to put in an application for the board, but it's up to the COG board to determine who's going to serve on their board.
Yeah.
So, you know, while yes, Cliff can make some recommendations, it's not a given that the COG board would be supportive one way or the other.
But most of the time he gets on.
Yes. The goal of the COG board is to have representation and the way it's set up now is basically on residents. But we are taking a look at the possibilities of, you know, not only where you live in a district, but where you work and play. Because again, this is a regional opportunity, so. But that's another subject for the COG board to take a look at this next year.
So we're comfortable with our board assignment the way it is?
I would, I'd like to, uh, defer that for a little bit. I need to think about that one. I'm sorry, I haven't really time to think about it. I need to think about that for a little bit.
To me, as far as
We can come back to it later.
This meeting?
Yeah. Alright, well, I'll, I'll make a motion on the remainder of the board assignments that we continue.
Uh, there's one that I'd like to, um, offer to Supervisor Kearney. Because I, um, he's on the solid waste task force, but there's an R- our, um, RCRC component of solid waste. And, um, it's just, he's more suited than I am for it.
Is that even listed, listed on here?
Yes.
Well, I know RCRC is.
Yeah. It's the, uh, I think it's, it's the, uh, local, local government finance authority.
Oh, it's probably environmental
Environmental Services, yeah.
Oh, sure.
The Environmental Services mostly deals with solid waste and, uh, all around that. And I, I went to the meeting and I just like, I was thinking that Steve needed to be sitting there instead of me, because that's what he does.
Yeah, I'm the garbage guy.
Yeah. So I
I, I don't have a problem with it.
If you'll accept that, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion with the change.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I second the motion.
Public comment? Do we have to, do we have to take a vote on each one of these things, or?
No.
No, I'm, my, my motion was to approve all of them with, with that change you suggested.
I just wanna look at a couple of the ones here.
And the CSAC change?
Yeah. Well, the CSAC stays the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You're sure about that?
Well, if everything else stays the same, I'm happy with that, you know?
Okay.
If we start I just wanna
Okay, the deal's a deal to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Really? A deal's a deal?
Suppose, uh, believe it or not.
I just wanna make sure I heard that correctly.
Anything I'm, I've attended, a deal's a deal.
We were having attendance.
So do I have a second on, on the motion?
Kearney second.
Yes, sure.
Okay, so I have a, uh, motion by Supervisor Wright and a second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment?
Pub, sorry, public comment. It's been a day, hasn't it? Public comment. None? Okay. And then we'll come back to the CSAC one, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, the COG.
The CCOG.
When, when are we gonna do that?
Right at the end of the meeting.
At the, uh, when we break away out right before that?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you guys? I mean, I'm just making the suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, um, okay, so we have a, uh, next is the adopt, uh, the recommend- recommended two thousand sixteen board supervisors meeting calendar.
Um, and again, you have the calendar for two thousand sixteen attached. The, um, Tuesdays highlighted in yellow are, um, the scheduled meeting dates. It's back to the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, with the fifth Tuesday of the month being an evening meeting.
Okay.
And it shows just one meeting in, um, December, but there are three meetings in November.
In November?
Yeah. That would be correct. The, uh, the eighth, the twenty-second, and then the third meeting of the twenty-ninth would be the night meeting.
Okay.
And we always have the opportunity to re-do that, should
Yeah.
the
Right, or on November?
Urgencies require.
That, that would be correct.
Well, I do have a question. What is our, I'm sorry, Debbie, it's your hand.
That's okay, I'm waiting for the chair to acknowledge me.
Well, I'm about to. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, one of the things I wanted to know is, um, typically we have our budget week. Do you have some idea about when you want to be doing that in June?
Um, typically, um, it's the same as the board meeting. We will open, we'll do the regular board agenda on the fourteenth of June with, um, that afternoon. Usually we'll try and keep the, the items to a minimum and the afternoon will be the, uh, CAO's presentation of the recommended budget with the following days.
So you plan to
Of that week
Kick it off on the fourteenth?
To the budget hearings.
So, a couple of things, I appreciate that, 'cause the week prior, there were some commitments there that were going to take me out of commission. So can we yellow those two as possibilities? 'Cause I know there's always some confusion about that and making sure everybody's on board and able to be present as potential board meetings?
We, we certainly can highlight the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth of June as, um, ongoing budget hearings, uh, recommended budget hearings if necessary. I would also then suggest that you do the same for September,
Right.
fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth.
That was my idea too. And then I would suggest, um, you know, looking at the calendar, I like that there's gonna be four of the night meetings. And I was wondering if perhaps the December meeting would be better suited for the twentieth? Kind of more midway of when we're going to have our meetings? Because we would potentially not have a January meeting until that second Tuesday in January. So I didn't know if that would make a difference or not, if there's going to be, um, any thought to that?
I- if you, if the board would prefer two, uh, board meetings in December, you could theoretically do it on the thirteenth and the fourth meet, um, Tuesday, which would be the twenty-seventh, it would be coming back.
No, I wasn't thinking that. I was just thinking of one board meeting in December and it being at the twentieth now? Because our next meeting would be the second Tuesday in January.
And, and we certainly could do that, especially if we're still having to return to the board every two weeks for the ongoing local emergency. And we have one on the twenty-ninth, we could declare it there. And I guess you would still need one on the thirteenth and then on the twentieth. We can do one on both the thirteenth and the twentieth if necessary.
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other folks on the board have any comments on that?
Just one quick question for board clerk and, and CAO. Our turnaround time for agenda items is still eighteen days, or?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Does that, do you see that changing in the future? Or is it gonna stay at that particular time?
It, it will, it will stay at that time. Um, I, there's always emergencies, which we try to be flexible and take into consideration. But i- if we go back to the two meetings a month, um, we will again start trying to post the agendas on Wednesday at noon time versus later in the week. When we were doing weekly meetings, it became a bit of a challenge to try and get those out on Wednesday. Um, but with the return to the normal schedule, we will, um, commit to, uh, posting the agenda on Wednesdays instead of Fridays.
Thank you very much, CAO.
Alright. Public comments on our, um, uh, schedule for next year?
Are we, are you meeting the second and fourth Tuesdays? You're going back to that other schedule or is it still every week?
No, it's a second and fourth. And then the night meetings. So there's some, November, August, May, and March have three meetings, so they have the night meetings. Okay. Other public comments? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All right.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item on the agenda is the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory board, and county service areas. Basically, there's oftentimes vacancies or terms of service end at the end of a calendar year. What you have before you are listed in the board packet of the Altaville Cemetery District. There's three vacancies for terms ending 12/31/19. Three incumbents have applied, Paul Abrolio, Lorena Darby, and Rex Widdell. Area 12 Agency on Aging, there are four vacancies for terms ending 12/31/18. Again, there's, for the four vacancies, there's three incumbents and one new member requesting appointment. They are Susan Rich, incumbent, Philip Sherwood, incumbent, Rex Weinsen, incumbent, and then Jenna Clark. Comanche Regional Park Advisory, there's one vacancy ending 12/31/17 with one applicant, Albert Alt. County Service Area 1, there are three vacancies to be filled ending 12/31/19. There's been three applicants. All three are incumbents. One is John West, the other Maria West and Bill Booth. Commission on Aging, there's one vacancy in District 1 ending 12/31/18. One applicant is the incumbent, George Frye. Children and Families First Five Commission, there are two vacancies for terms ending 12/31/18. Again, two applicants, both of which are incumbents, Wendy Nguyen and Mike Schmenti. The IHSS Advisory Board, there are four vacancies for terms ending 12/31/19. There were four applicants, two of which are incumbents, Kathleen Brewer, Patricia Licks, Marty Crane, who is an incumbent, and Bonnie Newman, incumbent. The Mental Health Board, one vacancy for term ending 12/31/18, one applicant, Erin Miley. The Murphy Cemetery District, there's two vacancies for terms ending 12/31/19. Two applicants, both of which are incumbents, Maureen Elliott and Jeff Lewis. And Prevent Child Abuse Council, there's one vacancy ending 12/31/16, and that's Eileen Agressal. And six vacancies ending 12/31/17 with six applicants, Amy Hasselwander, Mark Campbell, Barbara Rose, Maggie Rawlings, Douglas Green, Heather O'Leary. And I believe that is it for now.
If there's one change on the IHSS board, their terms are two years now. They sent me their resolution that changed it a couple of years ago, so their terms end in 2017 instead of 2018.
Okay.
Okay. Any public comments on this?
That was my correction also, but I have a question. On County Service Area 1, John West and Maria West, are they related?
Yes.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
It's not nepotism or anything like that?
Cooperation.
Well, maybe, that we wouldn't know about, but that was just my question and thank you for the correction on the two-year term.
All right, so can I have a motion, please?
Question before the motion. Are we voting on each individual or as a group?
We can vote on the group. Why? Do you have something that you want to carve out? We can? Huh?
No.
Okay. Then, just for the heck of it, then let's just go down the list and then we can do each one.
We don't have to on my behalf, Chair.
Okay. It's up to you, you know, I'll leave it up to you.
It's up to you. It's up to the board.
All right, so unless, you know, if you have something in here that you would like to vote no on, then I think you should be afforded that opportunity. Okay, so if you wish to do that, I'll do, we'll do it separately.
I have nobody to vote on.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Human Resources. Hey Judy.
Good morning. Judy Hawkins, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Today I'm bringing forward a resolution approving a ratified contract between Calaveras County and the Deputy Sheriff's Association, the DSA. During our initial meeting with the DSA, we asked for an 18-month extension due to the unknown financial status of the county brought on by the Butte Fire. We asked them to just extend the current contract. There were a few things that they did want to negotiate, but we did not go into a full negotiation with them. With the county's negotiator, Don Turco, and the coordination with the CAO and the Board of Supervisors, we met and bargained in good faith with the DSA and came to an agreement of an 18-month extension or contract extension with no wage increases. I want to thank the DSA for their negotiating team and their members for negotiating with us and understanding the financial situation with the county. We do have a contract and I'm looking forward to it being approved. Do you have any questions?
Questions by the board? Questions by the public? Any public comments on this? Okay, so I'll make a comment. I think, thank you for your hard work. I know that was very difficult. And I just want the public to know that our new Human Resources Director here has taken great strides in building bridges and doing a very phenomenal job at what she's doing, so. And I know that, I'm pretty sure that the board could agree with that, but from my personal observations, because I see a lot of the, a lot of the issues that you have to deal with and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I wanted to thank the board. You guys were awesome to work with.
So, could I have a motion, please?
I so moved.
Second. Second, so we have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I agree, you have been doing a good job.
Good job.
I appreciate it.
Great job. Good. Butte Fire update. Are you going to be first, Mr. Moss?
Mr. Moss is just coming up to introduce the Butte Fire update. And again, we have a couple of representatives here to update the board on MHUs and on our general fairness. Things are going well as what I'm hearing today with this current event. I do know that Mr. Krovitz can talk a little bit more about what's actually being done right now outside to address any kind of refloes and such. So with that said, one other comment. We had a meeting with Calaveras Recovers the other day. Very, very productive. Two board members, Supervisor Wright and Supervisor Edson attended. I think it's very productive to help out a little bit with outreach, especially in the District 2 area and especially in Mount Orange. So with that said, that's all I have at this point.
Questions?
I'll wait for Charlie.
Thank you.
Great.
Happy New Year, Board Supervisors. Jason Bates, Director of Environmental Health. Just want to give an update. The crews reconvened yesterday for the debris removal operations, evaluated sites after they were off over the holiday break. Despite the weather activity, we have 19 crews out today. Over the break, we did, the team was reviewing analytical results, so we had a addition of 44 properties cleared now with soil samples. So that's up to 170 properties and looking at evaluating that process to continue to make that more efficient. So despite the rain, there's still trucks out on the road today. So there's 19 teams. Weather permitting, we'll increase back to our numbers of 32 and hope to get up to 34. So just appreciate the public's patience as we continue through the debris removal operations. I know it's taking some time, but we are moving forward and trying to work on those properties where the site allows us to despite the heavy rains. So, any questions from the board at this point in time?
Question? Can you tell me how many people are doing it themselves? I know there's a number that went through a self-certification program, but there are properties who are cleaning themselves.
We've had a total of three self-certify. One of the things that I also want to update is right before the holiday break, we sent out a mailer to approximately 140 properties that we received information on from our GIS department where there, you know, appeared to maybe a structure. We've received correspondence from about 50 properties and through those, some, you know, there was no structure on, so we're documenting that. But we've received an additional 15 so far this week, write of entry forms. So we're having, we're trying to perform the outreach while we, you know, have teams here performing debris removal so we can adequately respond to and to make sure that people that want to sign up for the program do sign up in the program. So our self-certs, and I say that because some of the people that we've performed outreach to may go through the self-certification program, but we're not seeing many people go through that process.
All right, did you say 15 or 50?
Fifty. Fifty, we've, so out of the 140 of the mailers that we sent out to, we've had correspondence, whether it's phone calls, email, of about 50 of those mailers, which is pretty good considering we had the holiday break and stuff, so.
Possibly more to come.
And what I had correspondence, what happened in Trinity, the debris removal teams had left and they had about 17 people sign up and they went back out. We're trying to get everybody, you know, that want to participate in the program to participate while we have our teams here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I still have the same issue, Jason, and I know you're going to meet tomorrow with them.
Yeah.
So my issue has been the slow retrieval of the sample, samples from the sites. And it's not so bad, you know, when it's raining like this, but when it's clear out and people are waiting for that sample site to be able to do something on their property, then it's, it kind of causes some issues. And I mean, Jason has been very gracious. I get people that contact me and then I forward Jason answers every single time. So I appreciate that and I know that you're meeting with them tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I'm going to meet with them tomorrow and look at our process. As you know, we have a new lab. I want to evaluate our timeframes and make sure that when samples are mailed off, that, you know, we're looking at a three to four timeframe, at three to four day timeframe at the lab in reviewing, going through the analytical tests on the samples. But to make sure that when the sample results are received from the team, that they're being processed in an efficient and timely manner so we can keep that number increasing and moving forward. So I will be meeting with them and getting back to you.
Okay. Appreciate the effort there. Any questions?
I have a question, Chair. Jason, our trucking schedules, are we utilizing all of our trucks available and are they on an eight-hour or 12-hour schedule? And I ask that question because of information that was presented to me regarding that issue.
As far as I know, we're using all the trucks available that are being presented to the debris removal operations teams. As we have, you know, 19 crews, obviously we don't have all the needed trucks for the operations. And they have been, you know, up until this point, from what I understand, working an eight-hour schedule. But I can verify that and get back to you, Supervisor Olivera.
Yeah, we're using slam, I'm sorry, 10-wheelers with trailers, slam bangs or are we using end dumps?
Ten-wheelers, so.
So we're actually loading 10-wheelers out at the site and distributing down at the dump site?
Going, loading the 10-wheelers and going to forward landfill. As you know, that right now they're in the process of having through the emergency ordinance and a temporary use permit to have a transfer station install that toy on, which will increase the efficiency of the trucking coming in and out of the Butte Fire and removing debris. That is not yet complete, but once that is done, we should see efficiencies go up significantly.
Yeah, that's one of the areas that reported to me that there seems to be a real inefficiency there and I can understand why.
Yeah, and that's why we looked at, because, you know, we're not able to get 18-wheelers up into the burn area. So from the transfer station, we'll be able to transfer from the 10-wheelers to the 18-wheelers and then they can proceed to forward landfill. So that is to increase the efficiencies.
What is the turnaround time for a truck, 10-wheeler, coming from recovery site to dump site?
Recovery site, I would say it's probably, you know, there's some variables in there. It depends where it's located and stuff. But you're looking at, you know, from up here to forward landfill and there's been some efficiencies improved at the landfill. There was some time where the truckers, there was some time of staging at the landfill. That has, that has, that efficiency has been improved. So, you know, I would roughly say, you know, four hours as an estimate, you know.
They give what, two trips a day?
Yeah, two trips a day.
And how many trucks do we have on site?
Last number was, we were, I believe, we were just around, just over 200.
230.
230 and some. And then it was at 182, then it was 230. So it all, and again, the trucks are dependent on number of crews in the field, so.
I understand. So we have the capacity, we have the capability of doing 400 loads a day if we have a full contingency of cleanup crews and full contingency of trucks, right?
Yes, the potential. And also depending where they're at with debris removal at the site and loading, yes.
Okay, and so we're going to be looking at a satellite site for transferring in the end dumps. How will that increase our productivity by adding more end dumps and making that two-hour trip down to maybe one and a half hours, that or three?
Or one hour.
One hour.
Yeah, so instead of going all the way to forward landfill, the 10-wheelers will be going to toy on and then dumping there, transferring to 18-wheelers and then going back up into the debris area.
Twice the amount.
I would, that's what we're shooting for, is twice the amount, yeah.
And FEMA's on board with this, so state OES.
Correct.
So it's a project, joint project, hopefully we get real quick results on, right?
Yep, and there's, we have to have debris monitors due to the FEMA public assistance and that's been coordinated effort. So it's not just coordinated with state OES, but also for the FEMA public assistance in the reimbursement.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any time, Phil, for when it'll be completed, the transfer station?
No, I, hopefully tomorrow I'll find out. So I know they've started commenced work, but I don't have a time. Obviously, the rain is due to pouring a lot of concrete.
I'm surprised that they're hauling today, I gotta tell you, because of the weight of the water, but.
They, they're, that's where they spent yesterday evaluating the sites and, believe me, they are very cautious in safety meeting this morning and looking at only removing debris at those sites where, one, we're not going to, you know, destroy the private property, but also looking at our ingress and egress out of roads and the overall safety of transporting in and out. So the team was very, you know, methodical in how they chose the sites. And, you know, again, we don't, if there's opportunities where we can remove debris, we don't want to have a complete cessation of debris removal activity. We want to try to continue as much as possible.
Yeah, I was surprised. I mean, pleasantly surprised, actually, because I see the trucks moving today.
Yes.
The more, you know, the quicker we can get her done, that's better.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, let me have public comments on that, okay? Sorry.
This is for Jason. He mentioned toy on as being a, I didn't understand, a transfer site or a dump site? What exactly is happening at toy on and whereabouts at toy on? Is it by the school? Is it by the water tower? Is it by the PG&E substation? What, and this is ashes being dumped and then, well, ashes, yeah.
Well, I can, I'll speak to, Jeff has the exact location. It is in toy on. It's right, it's about, I think, a half mile from the school. Just to, one of the things that, when we looked at the site, there's air monitoring that's occurring during construction. We did air monitoring prior to construction of the projects. We got baseline. We also coordinated with the school, which is a distance away, to set up an air monitoring station there to make sure that there's going to be, you know, we have that constant monitoring. During all debris removal operations, there will be air monitoring stations set up around the site. And what the site is for is the removal of, of the ash material coming out of the burn, where it'll be dumped on a impermeable surface of the concrete, self-contained, with mitigation measures in place to eliminate any airborne ash. And then from there, put into eighteen-wheeler trucks and transported to forward landfill. So we have site safety officers on site. We have debris monitors on site and we have air monitors on site. This, the, the permit is temporary during, only to be used during the operations of debris removal activities. And I believe that the permit, for the temporary use permit expires June, June first. So either whatever comes first at that point in time. And then Jeff, you want to speak a little bit on the exacation of that?
Jeff Grovitz, Public Works. Public Works had the opportunity to discuss this temporary transfer facility with Cal, Calaveras Waste. They're the hauler and they're the developer and the owner of the property. We gave them what our criteria was for start. Went through a review comment process, three reviews, and we issued the permit, let's see, before the New Year's holiday. There is stormwater run-on, runoff controls. The processing slab is separated. And any runoff from that slab is collected and will be pumped and hauled. There's also overflow capability built into the site if we have a large event. There are limits in terms of when it can be operational. Plenty of fire suppression water on, in the perimeter. It's directly across the street from the PG&E substation on a, almost a seven-acre parcel. On Double Springs. So, good. Let me know if you see a problem. But we went ahead and analyzed it for traffic. We gave an enclosure permit, grading permit, stormwater permit out of Public Works. That's in addition to the temporary use permit out of the Planning Department. Questions on that?
Question? Is a slab already there or are we going to be building that?
They're building the slab.
Okay, so it's a designed slab for our purpose then?
Well, it's designed slab for a transfer facility purpose.
All right, and the hours of operation?
Ooh, I've.
And I asked that question, although, two-part question.
Two-point question. I believe that it's, I believe that it's seven to seven or something like that. They can have fairly long hours of operation. There is not electricity at the site, so they will be using portable light trees. And it gives them the ability to process into the evening. We didn't anticipate that to be a noise issue because we don't have residents nearby. And so when the, the work operations and the hauling operations out of the burn area cease after dark, they may very well be continuing to haul and continuing to load their vehicles and then running them out in the morning.
Okay, so we, we will have the capability of stockpiling on the transfer station if we have to?
The slab site, I believe, is just over eight thousand square feet. So it will handle quite a bit. And I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of trucks coming in and a lot of trucks coming out. And there are paved roads going in, going out on the site so that we don't have track-on, track-off issues with stormwater in terms of soil and sediment.
And we made arrangements for traffic control getting on the twenty-six from that feeder road?
That's a controlled intersection. Stop sign-controlled intersection from that direction. I imagine that trucks are going to be coming in one way, going out the other way.
There's good visibility there.
Yeah. All areas in terms of the flow path seem like we have pretty good visibility.
How many trucks do you determine to be using that transfer facility? End dumps and slam bags?
I'm assuming this is going to change the operation within the burn area significantly because instead of having an approximate two to two-and-a-half-hour turnaround time from the time they leave the burn area to the time they get back to the burn area, it's going to be in all likelihood less than an hour turnaround. And so the two-hundred to three-hundred bobtails that we have running within the burn area, they're going to be cycling all the time. And then the large transfer vehicles that are going to be going up and down twenty-six to forward, they will be running, I'm assuming, all hours a day and longer hours than the, than the construction hours of the debris removal. So it will be busy.
But, but they have hours of operation for forward too.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's only a certain amount of hours in a day that they'll be able to operate anyhow. But the cool thing about this is that it's going to speed up the recovery or the recovery process for the county residents up in that area tremendously.
It will also drive the cost down because transportation is a driving cost. I mean, I don't care.
It'll, it'll reduce your traffic, your truck traffic on twenty-six quite a bit too.
Yes, but it will increase the traffic within the burn area. So, but, but we're trying to get that, we're trying to get the debris out.
So do a question. We're dependent on how fast our cleanup crews can operate now once we get the transfer station, correct? Do we have, do we have any procedures for increasing those crews if we find this to be a very efficient way to do things?
You know, many of the sites have site constraints as far as, you know, how many excavators we can have on the site to remove debris and access in and out. So as we have more trucks available, in the past where we might have had some crews waiting for debris removal trucks to take the debris to forward landfill, now we'll, we hopefully won't have that lag time where they're waiting for another truck. So that's going to be the increased efficiency right there. As far as our teams, we'll have the same, you know, as the, the number of excavators on site, team members on site, that'll be the same. What this is going to do is increase the efficiency so we don't have that downtime waiting for additional trucks to load up. So, and then weather permitting, and as we get to these sites, we can increase and have additional teams at that point in time.
That was the root of my questioning. Thank you.
I mean, that, right now, I mean, it's really weather permitting, you know? And also, we have to look at, you know, and as we looked at, you know, one of our constraints compared to the valley fire is ingress and egress out of, out of, out of the fire area. And so, you know, we can, you know, we see a max of probably thirty-four, thirty-five teams at any point in time. If we feel we can increase the teams and still be safe and looking at public safety, roadways, obviously, that's number one, we'll do that. But it's, you know, it's that, it's that balancing act.
Thank you guys. Good job.
I have a question. You mentioned that times of operation are from seven to seven and?
I don't know that for certain. I'll have to get back. We'll get it on the website.
The issue I'm going to make is, you said that there's no residents that will be impacted. But to let you all know, all the people living down Double Springs, we can hear what's happening up at the school. We can hear what's happening at the substation. So there is a noise factor. So if you're talking about middle of the night and having lights, you know, we're hoping you're not going to be driving trucks in and out in off-hours when it might disturb the people that, you know, they're a half a mile down the road. But we're down hills and noise travels real easy down the hill. So, so I'll be listening too.
If you have issues, Ms. Newman, please call Public Works. We can always direct truck traffic out to twenty-six and avoid Double Springs.
And I just, you know, the exact hours, I know we won't be having, working late into the evening. One, it's a staffing issue because we have to have debris monitors and air monitoring at the site. Two, the landfill is not, I think the landfill closes at six o'clock. So we'll be, are, we're constrained to those hours. And also in respecting the neighbors, we don't want to, you know, impede on their quality of life. But we do appreciate the patience as this will increase our efficiency. So we can get to the exact hours, but it's not going to be a twenty-four-hour operation.
Just one moment. You might let the neighbors on Double Springs know that there's going to be stuff going on in there. There's only about ten of us, so it wouldn't be hard to notify.
We can, I'll work with Peter in the Planning Department to put out some sort of notification.
Okay, continuing on.
I was, I was wondering about the, the, sorry, supervisor, right? Chris had said, had, had once asked whether or not there could be a map put out on the website as to where the locations were that were being worked on. Reason I ask is that I'd like to know for myself. I'm in no great hurry, but I would like to be there at least on and off, not during the whole course of things. And I have the need to return to, to England at some point. So if they were to, if, if, if Jason could tell me it would be March before he could get there, that would be fine with me. At least I'd be able to make some sort of arrangements. The other thing was that I had a, my, my good friends had their lot cleared some time ago. And just after, it was after Christmas, I met with them and they hadn't received a certification. So we were wondering if it is a clean five, five-day turnaround and this, this site was tested about a month ago. There's, you know, obviously a disconnect there, so.
So the county PIO will be, to answer the map question, will be coming over to our office. We do have a map now in our, our front office. Just shows the parcels that are signed into the right-of-entry program or signed a right-of-entry form. Those that have, the properties have been cleaned. And we're trying to update it weekly. And then a kind of a general zones of where debris removal activity has taken place. And so Sharon's going to come over and get a PDF of that and put that out on the website. As far as the sampling, you know, let me know the specific address. The, the timeframe, it's, it's greater than five days because it has to be shipped to the laboratories, I mentioned before, analyzed, shipped back, and then reviewed by the, by the team. So it's, you know, anywhere from ten to fourteen days. And that's something I'll meet with the team on tomorrow to look at if there's any ways for increased efficiencies. If the samples were taken thirty days ago, by all means, and you have, if somebody hasn't heard of the results, either contact the debris removal operations center directly, who they've been in contact with, or contact me and as Cliff has or other people have, contact our office and we'll find out what the holdup is. Okay?
But we got to the, the, the month or, you know, the, the big estimate, the estimation as to when we might be getting the rest of it?
It's, we can, I can, we can try to do that. And I hate to take that on for each individual parcel because it's so weather-dependent right now and, and when we're going to be there. But looking at, I can give generalities and we can try to give some generalities. And maybe after, after my meeting with the team tomorrow as we get out, try to have some long-term projections. But it is just difficult as sometimes we run onto a property. For instance, not too long ago, we took fifty truckloads of debris out of that property. That was not a three-day cleanup. That was a seven-day cleanup. So it's, and so it, you know, I said, so it's hard. I can give some generalities. I just, I caution people that it's just, it's difficult at times because as we run into these different things, you know, I don't want to call them obstacles, it's just variables throughout the process. But, you know, once, if, now that we're back and projected out, you know, we can maybe sit down and try to give some sort of estimate for you, especially if you're going to be traveling a lot.
But there's also, there's also weather. And then we just had the holidays, which they were closed down through, through the holidays. So I'm imagining your friends had their lot cleaned just before Christmas because they were closed during Christmas. So it was probably.
It was, as I before, and this is Paragon Road. It was at least four weeks, months before, the day of Christmas.
Oh, really? So that'd be great. If you can get, if you can give Jason the address, if you have the address, then he can, he can, because he's going to meet with them tomorrow and he can check on that.
Yeah, yeah, by all means. And sometimes what happens too, they perform the soil sampling and whether not enough soil was removed or depending on what was on the property, there's a high concentration of metals. I don't, it's not a, it just, it happens and the, and the test results come back high, then they have to go back out to the property, re-excavate and then perform additional soil sampling at that point in time. And that causes delays in the process. And we're, you know, trying to continue to look at improving those, you know, operations and excavations so we don't have those high hits. But it all depends on what was there, you know, and aged the home and stuff. So, but give me the address and I'll look into it for you.
I just wanted to thank Jason for that. I know it's a difficult task. And I thought I'd, I'd heard five days turnaround. But having worked in a, in an analytical facility similar, not quite what Jason is dealing with, five, five-day turnaround is, is pretty fast. So thank you, Jason, and thank you for your responses.
One quick question, Chair. The information on individual lots or locations, is that public record a year or two down the road as far as lot cleaning and procedures? Is there any confidentiality of the property owner or is that all public record?
We'll have, it was something I'll have to work with, counsel with. We, at the end of the process, we're going to have all the records of debris removal that occurred on the properties as far as the amount of debris removed, manifest, et cetera. The operations team has that in their office now. When this is done, we will have those records. The county will retain those records as far as, you know, the analytical results, debris removed, et cetera. So with that being said, you know, I'll have to talk to counsel's office. But I would assume that if during a real estate transaction and people wanted to know if they, there was, you know, what, what was the actions taken on the property, just like they would look at our septic system or well records, those that would be, you know, as long as there's no statutory requirement or confidentiality of, of information, that would be public record.
Yeah, that's, well, as I said, looking in the future.
Yeah, and that, and that's one of the things too, is we looked at, you know, the, having, what we're, the, kind of going back here, but the county-state program and also the self-certification program, that we had somewhat the same process and requirements. So we look back, we didn't have two different standards when there was real estate transactions or other type of inquiries from the public, you know, having the same standards due and for the cleanup process.
One quick question. You mentioned you took fifty yard, or fifty dump truckloads of debris off one lot? Was that all a result of the fire?
That was all from the result of the fire. The only, the only debris that we are removing is fire-related debris. That's on the right-of-entry form. We have encountered some historical dump sites below ground that's not fire-related, that we're not removing that debris. So we are removing only fire-related debris. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Back to Public Works?
I think so.
Okay, great. So since we last got together, we've had a number of rain events, a number of snow events in the county. Rain events within the burn area necessitated the closure of Hava Road for about a five-day period until we could remove deposited debris off of the low-water crossing and allow it to be opened back again for public travel. I anticipate with every rain event above just light rain, we will have the same situation. I anticipate with every rain event above just light rain, we will have the same situation at this location.
Where's our bridge?
Where's our bridge? You don't really want to talk about that right now, do you?
Sure.
I can give you an update on the Hava Road Bridge on the HBP program, but I think that this is probably not the best time. I will bring it back very shortly, all right? Okay. And I will call you. In terms of staffing for this particular event, we are under a winter storm watch. There is a high probability that before 10 o'clock tonight, we will have rain flows that will cause debris flows and flooding and blockages and closures of roads. We already have evidence this morning of several locations on Jesus Maria, Whiskey Slide, Mountain Ranch Road, Railroad Flat, that have minor slides on them that we are cleaning up. We have two crews that are in and about the fire area that are teeming, so that if we do have a closure, we can deploy our K rails and shut the roads down, or if we can reopen them quickly, we will. Or if we have culverts that are being plugged, we can reopen them and keep the roads open. So far, I think we've been pretty successful. The snow event that we had over the holidays was very cold. It was the first major storm event, snowfall event, that we've had in this county, I think, for four years. And so there was a lot of joy and visitors coming in from outside of the county to play in the snow, which created a whole set of problems for us. And it generally occurs on the first major snowstorm of a season, but especially when there's been a pent-up desire to bring your families up to the snow, when we've got the first snow in four years. So that's good. We got most of our sand problems, our ice problems, resolved, and we're moving ahead with that. Public Works will be deploying information pamphlets, both on, on, on county websites, public information websites, to realtors in the area, so that we can make sure that the expectations of our citizens meet the program requirements, policies, and procedures. Continuing to work with FEMA and CalOES on the Public Assistance Program, sent them documentation on how we plan on doing the hazard tree removal, somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 trees, still need to come out alongside public right-of-way. And we are awaiting our, our, our project worksheets for the rest of the repairs. We're also scheduling with Caltrans, field reviews with FHWA for the emergency repair program on the federal aid roads within the burn area. Let's see, FMAG, I'm hoping to have the FMAG in front of you for approval, so we can deploy that program within the Milk Basin. And the HMGP program will take a little bit longer, there are other issues that we need to resolve, and we will be talking about that shortly. I think, had some retirements?
Did you get any help on the FMAG, or on the, on the matching part of that from East Bay Mud?
I've got a match on FMAG, and this is kind of stealing thunder, I've got a match from East Bay Mud on the FMAG program, the $441,000 grant, but I'm still searching for the larger grant matching funds. So I believe at this time, at this point in time, the FMAG grant with its matches whole, and we're ready to deploy. So we'll bring it to, to the board for approval and deployment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions from the board?
I have one. I've heard of, and this is probably going to be on a lot of properties, where a private landowner owns a significant piece of property, like 50, 60 acres or something, and the timber burned almost to the stick, and it's all being, it's in the plan to be removed, and they've heard from the forester, and to replant their property is 18,000 trees. Do we have, have we any kind of access or resources, or developed partnership maybe with prison labor, or I, uh, to help a private landowner get these trees into the ground? Seems like a daunting task for them.
It's, it's not a horrible task, the planting of the trees, I've done it. Getting the trees is a little bit more problematic, so I've got some Arbor Days scheduled, sponsored by PG&E, to provide trees to plant for the community. These are not overly expensive to get, but the problem is, the stock that was grown for planting this year was grown last year. And so the likelihood of us having a significant stock of trees to plant before the fall season prior to next winter, which is our next planting period, will be somewhat limited, because we're competing against other fires, as well as Butte, as well as the rim. So yes, we are working on Arbor Days to do that. And yes, there are a lot of trucks and a lot of logging truck companies that are doing the salvage removal under the emergency timber harvest plans. I see them every day.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, any other board comments?
You know, Supervisor Kearney, along those lines, over in Toomey County with the rim fire, the US Forest Service is taking kind of a creative program, and having different organizations and, and families and individuals and that sort of thing, helping to plant trees within the rim fire. So perhaps at some point, that might be a program to help facilitate to the private folks, too, so, something to think about in the future.
Could be something that, could be something that, if we can add it to, they're kind of full, inundated right now, but Calaveras Recovers Group may have some opportunity for that.
And remember that there is an order to the recovery, and we really need to stabilize the soils before we start moving into the reforestation. And we certainly don't want to be attempting to reforest before a logging activity.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Any other questions?
No, just thanks. Any public questions or comments for, for Director Probitz? Okay. All right, thank you. Charlie.
Good afternoon, Charlie Simpson, CalOES. I was asked to give a report on the MHU status from FEMA. So this is their report as of 5:00 yesterday afternoon. To use their terminology, licensed in means that they have signed over the MHU to the people who are going to occupy it. So anywhere where you see licensed in, just equate that to be occupied. It's not a lease, they don't go through that lease process, but it is a licensing process to allow those people to use those. So for the private sites, we have, eight are already occupied, one being installed, I believe, today. There's 10 pending, and the reasons for the pending action there are spelled out. As far as the commercial sites, they have the San Andreas Mobile Home Park and Big Horn, Big Horn Mobile Home Park are either already occupied or are assigned and will be assigned, or will be occupied in the next few days. Foothill Terraces has a contract for 20 pads. There are currently 11 on-site, and I was told the 12th may be coming in today. That leaves a number of eight pads available that do not have any occupants assigned to them. And as I spoke to you at the last meeting, if you know of people who qualify and who are willing to move into a commercial site, there's eight places that can be put in in a matter of days. So, other than that, any questions?
No, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Big Horn Mobile Park, where is that located?
Angels Camp.
Angels Camp, yes.
Angels Camp?
Right, yes.
Is that, is that the one Debbie, uh, do you actually get the store by?
You're doing the local store?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, so that wraps it up for the update on Butte Fire Recovery, and we're going to take a lunch break until 1:20.
Consent and report, you guys want to do that? Okay.
I can live with that. I need a little break, though.
Take a 10-minute break.
All right, so we have a 10-minute break, forget about lunch. Are we ready? Okay, all right. So we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-conservational, they will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may be, may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any members of the public that would wish to pull one of the consent agenda, Any, well, I'd like to pull 14, who want to talk about it? Okay. Okay, any members of the board like to pull an agenda item?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Wright to pull the remainder of the consent agenda item, consent agenda, and second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I pulled number 14. Jeff doesn't need to come back, Jeff, you don't need to come back. This is a small portion of Lewis Avenue, which is a one-way street, where the, just off of where the FEMA trailers are going. And right now, the one-way street goes past an elementary school. Just past the elementary school is an area which can be widened to make it a two-way street, which would mean that people can go into that subdivision where the FEMA trailers are without going past the elementary school, which we think is real important, because it'll, we don't, you know, if you can reduce traffic in front of the school, that's the best thing to do, right? So I just wanted to pull it so that we can explain it to the public, so the public knows, because a lot of folk, I've been getting a few calls and messages from people that live in the area, wondering, you know, what's going to go on with that. And, and so I just wanted people to, to know what's going on with that. And it's a, I'll bet you it's not even 50 yards of an area that's going to be changed. And it was slated to be changed anyhow, but since we have this group of trailers moving in there, you know, we decided to get it done a little quicker, so I want to thank Public Works for doing that. Okay? Any public comments on that? Board comments? Now, motion, please.
Move to approve.
All right. Got a motion by Supervisor Kearney?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And a reminder to the board that we need to go back to address the item of the CCOG representatives.
Yes. Okay. Did you have time to think about that? Certainly, sure did. So, um, so Debbie's on the, as, is a board member on COG, that leaves, how many people are on that board, seven, right?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. So, it's been, it's been an issue, and I've not, I've made it public, that even when I was on COG two years ago, or for a couple of years, I felt that, that, that we weren't getting good representation on this end of the county, in District One or Five, far as, as projects go. And some of that was because of the, what they call shovel-ready projects. And, but, you know, the shovel-ready projects, seems like there was plenty of them everywhere else, but not where we are. And so I think that's probably why this issue is coming up, and, or one of the reasons, it's imbalance of, of the representation within the District Four, I guess it is, District Four, or the perceived imbalance. So that's, that's probably why it was brought up. Is that what you guys are thinking?
That's what I've been informed.
So, I actually think that, I think Debbie's doing a good job on there, and I think that we're going to be okay with that. What do you think, Debbie?
You know, as board chair, you can make a recommendation one way or the other. I enjoy the work of COG, I enjoy being a part of the process of transportation, of looking at transportation for all of Calaveras County, but I also see COG as a regional opportunity in regards to our transportation needs and our transit. You know, so I would continue to serve if that's what the chair would like me to do. But I'm also open to whatever you might want to do. I would just go to say that if we're going to start talking about representation of districts throughout the county, we're going to start looking at representation throughout the county, on each and every committee and commission and JPA we have. So it's just not about COG, if that's the way this board feels.
Is that like a threat?
No.
Kind of sounded like one.
No, it's not a threat.
Oh, because you bring that up every single time anyhow.
Because it keeps being brought up of COG, and it's been historical. And again, COG isn't about just a regional or specific part of the county, it's a regional approach to it.
Yes.
So.
So, you know, as, when I first came into this office, I'm looking at the, the transportation deficiencies throughout the county, and I see where the need is, in my opinion anyhow. So that's how I thought of it when I was on COG. I was frustrated when I was on COG, and, and that's why I left, actually. Largely because I felt that I was unloaded, no matter what. And if you take a look at all the money that was spent in the county, through COG, over the past 30 years, find out where the money went. And to me, we have a lot of projects throughout the county that need attention, and, and that's, that's been the contention. So you could say that they work for the whole county regionally, all you want, but if you show me the money and where it went, then you will see a different story. And that's my-
Well, I'm not going to debate that, and I'm not going to go on here. I'm just sorry if that's why you left COG, to not be frustration, and not be a part of a solution to represent that area of the county and to move, you know, in that kind of direction, I'm, I'm sorry for that. That's not why I thought you left COG. You know, I will say it's a seven-member board, and I think the board tries very hard to get representation from all areas of the county, and it's just not where you live, it's where you work and, and play. So, but it's your choice. It's your choice. I mean, apparently it seems to be a concern, so.
Well, that's my concern, that is actually a concern. I mean, if it, if it were, if it keeps being brought up, then there's an issue. If it, if it doesn't keep being brought up, then there's no issue. So, I'd, I'd just like to see it straightened out.
Yeah, it, I mean, it is a transportation planning, and then transportation, infrastructure- Yeah, it, I mean, it is a, a transportation planning and then tra- transportation, infrastructure expenses, I mean, it's, it's insanely expensive and it's complex. There's, it's not just Calaveras County, it's the entire state, you know? And so, uh, it's, it's, there's, there's no easy answer. We couldn't just say, you know, I, I don't think there's a, I think it's more of a perception than a reality, because there's the projects that have been built that have gone through rigorous, um, public scrutiny. And, uh, and planning, and so, um, it's understandable that Cliff wants projects done in, in his part of the, uh, you know, Valley Springs area especially, but San Andreas too. I mean, there's needs all across the county, but it does seem like there's a, COG has a pretty good, uh, uh, you know, has an excellent executive director and a good board. So I'm, I'm, you know, happy with, uh, with Debbie, you know, being our board rep, that's for sure. So I appreciate that effort there.
Well, Supervisor Kearney is also on the board.
Right, but we were specifically talking about Debbie. Steve, you're doing a great job too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I still would like to see more representation on all districts. And I think District Five?
One.
District One, I'm sorry. It is, has not been sufficiently represented to the extent, to the statements made by Supervisor Edson. I know that there is a great concern in my district about not being represented on the COG board.
Okay, explain that, because Cliff served up until a year ago on COG. And so, are you talking like the last couple of years? Are you talking about eight years?
I'm talking about this last year, maybe the year before. I'd like to see the projects, and I've asked for this information, but have yet to receive it. The projects in District Four compared to all the other districts.
Have you met with Melissa?
Yeah.
I have attended, I'm sorry, what?
Melissa, you can choose the...
I've contacted Melissa, I've requested that information both by email, and unfortunately, there was a glitch in the system when we had the holidays come up, and this was prior to the holidays, and I'm not blaming Melissa, I'm just saying that I requested information even before even addressing the situation, which was brought to my attention by my constituents.
But not all the time are your constituents correct.
I understand that.
That's the thing, is just because my constituents say something, doesn't mean...
I mean, wind trail was a...
I agree, I agree a hundred percent. You're wrong. I've been down that path. I've got the T-shirt and the videotape.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, I, I need to have that information to make sure that we have that. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to obtain it yet. I'm not saying it's Melissa's fault, but the bottom line is, we're in a position to make a decision.
And you could also talk to either one of these guys here that are your board rep, and bring one of them in to help you get that information, too.
I just talked to this gentleman, just heard what he said. Steve, what do you think?
Well, I, I, I understand where everybody's coming from, and yes, Debbie does do a good job as, uh, on the COG board, but the perception is probably exactly what Cliff is saying. There's a, uh, when you have the city council with two members and a citizen member from Copperopolis and the supervisor, it's like any other perception. They're, they are going to think that, uh, more gets done there. Does that happen? I've only been on it one year, and I'm going to tell you it's a very technical assignment, uh, and I put effort into understanding it. I have advanced very far from where I was a year ago. I can understand how Cliff is feeling about this, and I'm willing to go with the way the board wants to go. I do take a, you know, note of a comment that says we need to look at all of the committee assignments and make sure that we're represented in the county. I completely agree with that, and I've been looking at that, at everything that I have done. And I, if I've, if, if there is something where we're not bringing everybody in, I hope that it's pointed out so that we can work to change that, because I'm all for that. I do, uh, I don't understand the concept that it's regional, um, because there are things that people see in their areas that I don't see. I, I honestly don't go up to District Four very often, or District Three. I have, uh, more connections in Two and One, but there, I rely on the people that are from that area. I'll go with, uh, the, the attitude of the board towards it. I do understand that there needs to be representation, uh, from every part of the county. District Five is represented by me. That's kind of wishy-washy answer, I think, but, uh...
Yeah, it's pretty wishy-washy.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying I understand the, the perception, and really, it kind of has to go back to Cliff. Does he, does he feel like his district's being slighted? Because I have, uh, I have dug my heels in, and something that I didn't think was going to be that big of a deal, but it ended up being a multi-meeting, uh, discussion over the COG representation. And, uh, in the end, uh, we straightened it out, but, uh, my point then was to, to bring people from all areas of the county involved in it.
We have that issue on LAFCO right now. We have an opening on LAFCO because that board can't decide about representation.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that true? LAFCO representatives?
What is she talking about?
There's an opening on the LAFCO board, and that decision can't be made by that board because of representation and what area of representation you want on that board?
That's not the reason.
It's not the reason.
Oh, okay. Then I'm mistaken.
Well, it's, uh, the, um, okay, well, I mean, we shouldn't, we can't even talk about that because it's not here, so...
Off topic on that.
But I know the reason for that.
Yeah, that's, that was...
It's a whole different situation.
Well, I guess it's perception then.
Yeah, there's... Are you right with, Debbie, continue? You said you were prepared, you're still okay with that? Yeah, I'm going to be okay with that. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, um, to affect unless, well, I can make the motion, and then we can have Bonnie talk. Uh, but I would like to go through all of, um, the other committees, um, in the, uh, that we have to make sure that each, that, uh, that have, that are required to have representation in each of the, um, districts, and take a look at that.
Is that something that you're asking staff to bring back? Because as far as today, the board has already taken action on it unless the intention is to reconsider, but clearly there isn't, um, the same people that were here earlier, so if any reconsideration of that vote would have to come back at a subsequent meeting.
We can come back, we can discuss it.
Well, we have other openings with other committees coming forward, right? I mean, it's just what we did today was fulfilling the obligations of what we needed to do, but we have a number of other committees and commissions and such that have openings still.
That's correct. Those were just the ones that we have the applicants for and were, were able to fill at this meeting.
Yeah, because I, I do, uh, want to mention that, like, the Parks and Rec Commission, you have to reapply, um...
Library Commission, Fish and Game.
Got to get people to even want to get on them. Yeah. But anyway, um, I, I made that motion that we appoint Debbie and Steve to COG for this next year.
Well, second that.
Okay, great. Okay, so, um, the, the motion is for Steve and, or for Debbie to be on COG for next year?
Along with Steve.
And Steve.
Yeah, Debbie and Steve.
And Mike as the alternate.
Mike is the alternate.
I didn't make that motion, but I'll include that in my motion.
And, um, so all in favor?
Public comment?
Public comments, please? Sorry, Bonnie.
Bill. Bill McManus, Hamford Hill. We keep chasing this COG thing around, and just the way it's structured makes it kind of unruly, where a place like Angels Camp has two representatives, and they don't have that many people as opposed to other districts in the county. Now, I'm sure it's probably the way it was founded, or that's what it took to get them to participate in it, but what if you could drop someone out from the Angels Camp position? Give them one position on COG, then that allows you that position to reach out to another district, because by the time you get Copper, Angels, and District Four, you've got, you know, you've got a majority there, uh, and yeah, there's a perception that it, that it's not fair. And over the years, COG has not had, I hate to say, a real stellar reputation. Even the supervisor from my district some time ago was terribly abusive in her COG membership, and it didn't, it didn't do well for COG. So if there's some way that we don't have to argue about, you know, but the numbers don't work out, but we argue over district-wide representation, Angels is represented with one person, you know, and, you know, the other districts, you know, should be represented as much as possible, but the way it's set up, the numbers just don't work out. It's really tough to get five districts represented, plus two from Angels. Well, that's it. We haven't even talked about the supervisors yet. So, you know, I don't know if that's part of the charter of COG or, or whatever, what has to be changed.
There are rules where the electeds, I'm sorry, Cliff, excuse me.
Sorry, you go.
There are rules that the electeds have certain responsibilities that the citizen appointees don't, um, in the charter, and, uh, I'm, I, I'm not prepared to tell you verbatim what they are, but, uh, it's not as easy as just saying, uh, one from Angels Camp is deleted and one from the board is deleted. They have responsibilities that have to do with, say, personnel or, or things of that matter.
All I'm saying is that the COG is distributing taxpayer money.
Point taken.
And that, you know, uh, you'd like to think that you're being represented in some measure, uh, for those monies being spent, because it, it came from all of us to go into the pod, and that's, that's not happening, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of oversight there.
It's a concern of mine also, Bill.
Okay.
It's a good point taken.
I've only served on one commission or committee or advisory board, and the, the biggest issue was finding somebody willing to step up, and that seems to be, um, uh, the biggest problem, and people want representation, but they're not willing to step up. They're not willing to recruit someone to step up. So I, I know in our committee, we're glad to have anyone step up just so we can continue to conduct business and have a quorum and do what we're supposed to do. So, uh, I wouldn't care if everyone from West Point wanted to be on our committee. I mean, because we need people, and the people are, are the, the biggest, um, value, the biggest value that we have is the people willing to step up. And so I, I listened to Cliff said he didn't like, he withdrew because he was outvoted, but that's when you dig your heels in and you fight. You know, that's why I'm here. You know, I, I'm one person fighting all of you guys, in a sense. And if you don't have people that are willing to take on the, the challenge, because it's a challenge, and it's also, it's a sacrifice to sit on these commissions and, and boards. We, well, I won't talk about this other thing that's going to come up at some point, but when we have people willing to step up, we know that there's a commitment, and when we gotta, you know, trick people or coerce them into participation, their heart's not going to be in it, and we're not going to get the same results as we have when we have people that are, you know, really committed and really involved and willing to do the homework and willing to do research and willing to do outreach, though that's the value. And wherever they come from, um, I, I'm from a little place over there that used to be District Five, now I'm District One. We're all disenfranchised from the, the system in some way or another, but I am a part of Calaveras County, and I may not have participated totally in the Butte Fire, but my heart was there, and I felt that this happened to me too. I only had ashes on my house, but I realize it, it could be me, and so I put myself in everybody's position, everybody's shoes. And, you know, I don't know how good a job any of you all do on your commissions, but if you're willing to step up and allow the public to watch and see, then I think we're glad to have you, and, and if you can find somebody to replace you that's going to be better than you, we want that person too. But it's just so hard to get people to volunteer, and that's what I see all these commissions as, being people that are willing to give up their time and sacrifice time with their family, maybe time at work, in order to participate. So that's just my feeling, and I'm glad to see anybody of all of you stepping up on any level, so thank you.
Earlier on, we, you were saying just how, in, in what bad shape the county was, and I would just like to see that, as opposed to there being some sort of argument as to, to, to whether District One had or hadn't, you know, a certain district wasn't represented that you, that, that you pulled together for the overall financial, financial health and, and quality of life in, in the county. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Well, there's actually, she's public still. So, so let me give you an example. Sorry. I drive through Angels Camp, I have, there's thirteen crosswalks in Angels Camp, all right? I tried to get one crosswalk in San Andreas, can't do it. Always an excuse, why? Can't do it. We are the county seat, we have a bunch of people running around here trying to cross this highway. There's always, at nighttime, people crossing that highway, and people come through here fast. There's nothing visually here to slow them down. So we got people in the thirty mile an hour zone doing fifty miles an hour while people are trying to cross the highway in San Andreas to go to the store. I see it all the time. I've been after a, a resolution for that. Can't ever happen. So, then I see projects that are shovel-ready in Angels Camp. Sidewalks and crosswalks. I'm asking for one crosswalk. I see people down there repainting crosswalks down in, in Angels Camp all the time. And I have people in danger in my town, right here, and we can't even get one crosswalk. We have total of three in all of San Andreas. And it's a concern to me, and it's a concern to me that, that, that nobody's listening to that.
But, I mean, as you know, crosswalks are, I mean, are tricky business, you know? You can't just go put a crosswalk out wherever you think is a good spot. There's a lot of traffic planning and engineering that has to go into it, because otherwise, sometimes if you make a crosswalk, um, you're actually going to be creating, you're going to be pedestrians in danger, uh, more so than, than not. So really, it does take, there's, there's some, you know, a lot of, of thought that goes into it.
Yeah, so the studies get funded by COG, and then the studies, once they're funded, then go into another process that, by COG, that can get funded to get it done.
So, you know, I can understand all this. Really, it's about my appointment to the COG board or not. We can discuss projects until we're blue in the face, and I can go on and on and on and tell you the top three projects in Calaveras County. We have one in San Andreas on that ticket. So, I mean, again, we can debate these projects, and I totally understand your frustration. I totally understand what you'd like to see for San Andreas, and, you know, it's just constantly beating that horn, or tooting that horn and beating that drum to get what we need done. But bottom line right now, it's about my appointment to the COG board. So, I, I mean, we can go on and on about projects and the length, and I can tell you twenty-five years ago, when I was on the City of Angels and trying to get a sidewalk, I mean, it's a fruitless conversation right now. It's about the appointment to COG.
I guess I do.
And then these other issues, we can work through them in this next year or two, whatever they might be in regards to representation. whatever they might be in regards to representation along Highway Four or not, or District One, or projects, or whatever it might be, we're not gonna solve those things today.
I got that motion on the floor, it's been seconded, it's gonna be a vote. Mr. Chair? Yeah, I'm not gonna vote for that now.
Is that a call for a vote?
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote for that now.
Oh, so I'll call for a vote?
Yes.
Aye.
No.
No.
Steve?
No.
All right, can I have another motion, please?
Call move that we place Supervisor Edson on the COG board as a member of Calaveras County.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
That's bullshit, that's total bullshit, man. Supervisor, announcements?
I have a CSA One meeting tonight, there isn't a COG meeting this week, Thursday, there is a Valley Springs Boosters meeting, which puts on the civic event, the fireworks over in Vogan, I'll keep my office hours on Thursday, and Friday, I'm going to attend the Commission on Aging meeting, Soloway's Task Force has not been meeting for a while now because of the Butte Fire, but it will meet again on the nineteenth, at the time of four-thirty, and it's meeting at the Town Hall. Okay?
I, I've been quite engaged with our snow problems we've had up in District Three, in the Arnold, Arnold area, the Dorrington area, and above, working quite close to the Public Works, and with our maintenance yard and our snow removal folks up there, Director Travis was absolutely correct when he said that we had not only snow problems, but ice problems that resulted in a lot of vehicle accidents, a lot of spinouts, you add the increased population into our county from the snow, which I really enjoyed, the folks up there really enjoyed, our, our visitors, drove us to have a meeting that was held here in the San Andreas Administration Building with our CAO attendance, Public Works, two supervisors, to discuss the problems that we, number one, recognized, and discuss the things that we did right, out of that meeting, we came up with the, one of the major quick resolutions to a problem was our communication to the public, I understand that, that communication is gonna be coming out, and these are things we did in the past, I mean, we're talking probably three or four years ago, where we were able to communicate through pamphlets, communicate through merchants, things of that sort, we're bringing that back to, number one, educate the public, and then tell them it's, it's not real easy driving up here in these conditions, it's snowing, and we can't get the resources we need to get that snow off the road, minute it gets to be two inches or more, so we have to have an understanding between our visitors and our own county resources, I think we've reached a point where we're talking, and we're talking wisely, I did get a lot of cooperation from our Public Works Division, but we have to also realize that I don't know if our budgets are in place for the resources we need, for what we have coming in the near future, I'm working with that with Jeff Crowe, that's Scott Anderson, I am appreciative of the fact and the efforts put forth by that committee, I intend to see what's our next storm event's gonna have for us, and that's gonna be this week, I do know that the commitment through the communications from Scott Anderson and through Jeff, that they're putting all their resources they possibly can, in advance of that storm, to make sure we don't have a, a problem like we experienced over the Christmas holidays, so, I'm very engaged in that, and I appreciate the cooperation by all parties in that adventure, I am, will be attending some meetings, we did have a scheduled meeting for the Governor's Task Force on Dead Trees and the Bark Beetle Project, we had a helicopter tour scheduled for tomorrow, with Northern California, see the devastation of our dead tree problem, unfortunately, that was canceled due to weather, due to weather, we are, we will be meeting next Monday in Sacramento as a committee to address those issues and see where we're going with that. I am meeting on the seventh, on Thursday, with the Highway Four Water Commission, actually Committee, we do have some information with that, hopefully, it'd be forthcoming, I understand that Dennis Mills was here and had some interesting information out of Sacramento about legislature and what's happening in our water world. I think we are, I have something on the eighth, and that's gonna be the Calaveras Committee on Aging, I think we have that meeting, we will be attending that meeting and representing the county as a representative on the board, thank you.
Okay, Debbie?
Let's see, we do not have a COG meeting in January per our JPA, so our next meeting will be in February, I attended a Child Support Agency meeting in December, and basically, it was a review time of, the agency will be having kind of a annual, annual report, you might say, that I'll bring back to the board in February, of the work that goes on in that agency, and where they stand in their work, I attended an IHSS meeting, thankfully, we have four new, or two new members, and two members returning, so we'll have a full board meeting in January, and I, too, will be attending the Highway Four Water Committee meeting this Thursday, and there is no EMS meeting in January, we'll meet again in February.
I would like to, do you have anything to report on? So, I, I would just like to say that I appreciate the confidence that a couple of the board members here have in me, and honestly, I, I try not to be an egomaniac, or a power control person, I only think of what, what is good for the county, and that's the way I work, so, that's the best I can do, secondly, is there, is there a way that I can take the extra money the board chair gets and spread it amongst the, the, the other board members? Can we make a determination to do that?
Certainly nothing today, we, I mean, there's-
Not today.
There's an ordinance that establishes, it, it would essentially have to revisit the entire ordinance establishing board.
Can we take a look at it?
If, if it's the direction of the board to bring that item forward, the board as a whole can direct staff to bring that item forward.
So, I would very much like that to happen, if it's okay with the rest of the board.
I actually had already asked that to be brought before the board, and I've kind of laid a little low on it, but, but I think that it is appropriate that that be fixed.
I mean, we all work hard in, in our own ways, even today is very, very difficult for everybody, so, I don't think that-
One of the things that staff has expressed some concerns about this is because this is tied to, this ordinance is tied to other, um, union. Union, it, it's tied to, to a union due, and not, not due, but, uh, union pay that is currently under negotiation, so, if this is something that the board's wanting to consider a change in, the board may want to consider bringing this forward once all of the negotiations have concluded.
Which is frankly why I've been quiet.
Okay.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, Cliff, but I wanna fix the whole thing.
All right. Anything else, anything else from the public, go ahead, Bonnie.
Several years ago, I'm not sure how long, maybe four or five years ago, administrative office, as well as members of the board, voted themselves to donate ten percent of their salary back to the county. I'm not sure how strapped we're gonna be with the loss of revenue from the fire, that may be something you all would wanna consider, maybe county employees would wanna consider doing something to that sort, that's just a suggestion that would probably be needed to vote on by all the members of the unions, but if we're gonna find ourselves in a place where we don't have enough finances to fund our services, that may be something that we wanna consider, and I, I've got some other thoughts about this, but that'll probably be one of my five-minute rants that I go on, but that might be a consideration for y'all to, to make, that maybe it's time everybody take a cut in pay in order to facilitate the continuance of the services that we need to provide our residents.
Any other public comments? All right, meaning adjourned.